All right, we'll call the meeting order for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Steve, do you mind doing a roll call for attendance?
Certainly. Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Batschnick? I'll circle back. Ms. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Lingalis?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Scholman?
Here.
Ms. Tabasnik? Thumbs up?
Sorry, my audio got disconnected. I don't know if I missed the roll.
Uh, no, we just caught you, so we're considered ready.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Bryce?
Present. Good, thank you. Great. Um, before we begin, I believe Mr. DeBree wants to make a brief statement unrelated to, uh, applications and then we'll, uh, uh, move on to the next item on our agenda.
Uh, I'm in a meeting, Alan.
Oh, uh, Mr. Garcia, do you mind muting yourself? Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. DeBree.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just have to apologize for last meeting. Um, I was completely just taken off on the sideline, like, and focused on another issue and it, it blew up and disrupted your meeting and that was not my intention at all. Um, I'm mortified by the whole thing and, uh, very sorry for that. And need to apologize to everyone for it. It wasn't my intent. Uh, I know your time's precious and you guys work really hard on this and yeah, I did not, I did not intend for any of that to spill into this and cause any disruptions. So all, all other screens and devices are off. You have my complete and undivided attention on everything moving forward. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer them and I'm sequestered into essentially a closet for all future zoning meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement tonight. Um, the application I believe you're here for later, uh, unfortunately is now closed, so we won't be able to hear from you later tonight, but thank you.
No problem.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, um, as far as, uh, seating of members, uh, we have one, two, three, four, uh, five, six, seven, eight, nine, if I can, and 10. So, um, for the first application, uh, we'll seat, uh, Diana, because she's first on my screen. Um, for the second, we'll see, uh, Anna, and for the third, we'll see Harvey, uh, for the public hearings. And we'll continue to rotate through those, although I believe for the last application tonight, uh, Harvey's not seated for that, so we'll uh, seat someone else if it's the wrong order. So we'll move to our first, uh, public hearing. This is, uh, twenty twenty-five dash six eight. Uh, our Paul and Mary Kokis, uh, proposed text amendment to modify building materials in CD three W for single and duplex dwelling units. Public hearing, report and recommended action. Um, for those members of the public who are, uh, wishing to speak during this, um, application, uh, you will have an opportunity to. Um, first, we are going to hear from the applicant who will give a presentation. Uh, the commission will then ask questions. We will then open it for public comment, hear all of the public comments. And then after that, the applicant will have a chance to respond before we go into deliberations. Uh, with that, who is, uh, representing this application?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Attorney Sachi, go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stanford. And I represent Mary and Paul Kokias, who are the applicants before you and who submitted the text amendment application that is pending. Uh, they are owners of property at Nine Cove Avenue. And this all came about when they approached the zoning staff with plans to renovate the structure on that property and were advised that the exterior materials that they sought to, um, install were not permitted under the current regulations for the CD three W zone. So this application was filed to amend the regulations to allow vinyl exterior materials in that zone. Since no site plan application or special permit application was filed in connection with this text amendment application, there was no notice required to abutting property owners within a hundred feet, nor were there signs required to be posted on the property. However, the requisite legal notices were published in the hour in accordance with your regulations and state statute. So Mr. and Mrs. Kokis, as I said, own Nine Cove Avenue. It is in the CD three W zone. And today, the three, CD three W does not allow vinyl exterior materials. It's interesting to note that the property directly to the east of them is the CD two zone and that allows it. So it's all vinyl is also allowed in CD one M, one L, one S, CD two, and CD three. But for some odd reason, not in the CD three zone, three W, which exists out of for a small portion of Cove Avenue in East Norwalk and also on Row Eight Avenue. So in order to move forward with their proposal, I'd like you to consider amending the regulations to allow vinyl, a very high-grade vinyl that is produced by certain teed. And, um, this way would be enable them to, in a cost-effective manner, make the renovations necessary and that they deem appropriate to the structure. Um, staff has shared some additional, perhaps, um, modifications to the text amendment. And it would be to indicate that it could only be a high-quality vinyl material and also only be allowed on single-family and two-family structures in the CD three's W zone. We have absolutely no objection to those suggested revisions. That's the long and short of it. I think the CD three W may just have been one of those, um, oversights when you undertook these massive zoning rewrite. Um, and I don't see any rational or rational or peculiar reason why the CD three W was, um, left out of, uh, the zones in which this material could be used when it's allowed in all the other residential zones. So that's the long and short of it.
If I may, um, w- w- why is it important, uh, to your clients, uh, to use this particular material?
Well, it's number one, it's cost-effective. It's, it's a, a, not as expensive as the other materials that are allowed in the three, required in the three D, CD three W. And the, um, the vinyl industry has advanced such that it is, um, uh, wind resistant, it's mold and humidity resistant, and it's, it's a quality product. It's not vinyl of old. So I think the, the industry has moved forward such that the regulations should also move forward to allow it in this zone. And again, it's, it's allowed in all the other residential zones and it's kind of odd that a zone line prevents Mr. and Mrs. Kokias from installing this type of material on the exterior of the structure. Right next door, that the property right next door is installing, installing vinyl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scholman.
Looks like I got muted. Um, I want to correct myself from earlier. I actually said that, uh, Harvey was not seated. That is incorrect. He is a regular member and, uh, my apologies. Um, are there other questions for Attorney Sachi? All right. Uh, Attorney Sachi, do you have anything else before we go to public comment?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Um, so next we will go to, uh, public comment. Uh, if you'd like to speak on this matter, uh, Brian will, will share those details in a moment. Uh, this is your, uh, one opportunity to provide comments on this, uh, text amendment. Um, as mentioned before, uh, we will listen to all of the public comments first and the applicant will have an opportunity to respond at the end. Uh, you only have one opportunity to speak here. And we ask you to be concise and polite. And lastly, uh, please start with your name and, uh, address. Brian, or do you mind, uh, sharing with how people can participate?
Sure. So if anyone would like to speak on this application, uh, please use the raise your hand tool. It's located at the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once, or if you're dialed in on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Seeing none, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Uh, Attorney Sachi, do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Bryce, I do not conclude that presentation.
Great. Uh, anybody else have questions for Attorney Sachi? All right, um, is there a, a motion for this application? Tammy, is that a move to approve?
Yes, I didn't mean it fast enough.
It's all good. Is there a second? Galen, seconds. Um, Brian, do you mind bringing up the resolution?
Sure. And then just to confirm, uh, shaping Diana or Anna seated on this one?
Uh, Diana, I believe is what I had said.
Okay.
Misspoke earlier.
All right, let me find. I got a bunch of resolutions. Just made one quick change, which was to the effective date, just because, um, it had previously been the twenty-eighth, but there's a holiday next week and with text changes, um, it'll be a little bit.
Are there any, uh, comments or modifications to this resolution? All right.
Let's confirm real quick. Sorry, uh, Mr. Bryce. Um, so that the application, it was referred out to West Cog, um, who did not make any findings. Um, it was referred out to the Harbor Management Commission, who made some comments, but did not find it inconsistent with the Harbor Management Plan. And I think that's it just for, um.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yeah. Yeah, to clarify one thing now that reading the, uh, resolution. Um, okay, so i- if it's permitted for a, say, a single-family residence, but not permitted for any other uses, does this mean that an accessory building would not be permitted to match the, um, the single-family home? Or was, is there any thought about that?
The way I read this is, these are building materials for the primary building. Um, it's like to the left of that table at the top of Brian's screen there.
Yep.
Um, Brian, do you know offhand if we?
Right, yeah, so it's, this is, yeah, generally limited to the principal structures. So would not be applicable to, um, like a garage, like a detached garage.
And it's your, uh, okay, so it's like, uh, it's a deliberate, uh, that, that's like a deliberate statement on, on your part here.
Right, yeah. And, and part of that is also the fact that most time the accessory buildings aren't visible, so you're really focusing on the primary structure.
Okay.
Any other comments or modifications to this resolution? All right. Um, Brian, do you mind calling the roll?
Sure. Let's see. Mr. Cantor? Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right, that's unanimous.
Thank you, everyone, for your time on this this evening. Mr. and Mrs. Kokias certainly appreciate your attention and your action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to our, uh, next application, which is twenty twenty-five dash seven five. Uh, map change, that's Melissa Holmes, seven and nine Couch Street, District Two, Block Twenty-eight, lots eight and nine. Zoning map amendment to rezone seven and nine Couch Street from CD two to CD three. Public hearing, report and recommended action. Uh, who here is, uh, representing, uh, seven and nine Couch Street?
I am, you're, uh, I am.
Great, wonderful. Uh, do you mind starting with a app, uh, a presentation of your application?
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Nathaniel Ship, uh, attorney representing, uh, Melissa Holmes, the, uh, applicant. Uh, it's, uh, as mentioned, it's an application for a zoning map change, um, for two parcels on Couch Street, uh, affecting, uh, seven Couch Street and nine Couch Street. The, uh, premises of the, uh, owner, uh, the applicant, uh, bought the property in May of two thousand twenty-four. Um, when, uh, she bought the property, the tax records reflected it as a three-family, uh, even though the, uh, listings and everything else represented as a poor family. Um, but it's been taxed, uh, for the last, uh, I believe fifteen years at this point, fifteen or more years as a, uh, actually, I believe, maybe twenty years as a three-family. And it seems that the, uh, seller, um, had done some work with, um, as we've come to find out, without, uh, permitting. And, uh, had been using it in excess of, uh, what was, what it was legal to do. Um, we were notified by the town that, um, the premises was in violation. And since the notification, uh, was received by Ms. Holmes, uh, efforts have been made to remedy the situation and, and, and discussions and, and uh, trying to move forward to do this, um, one of the discussions was a, a zone change amendment, uh, given that the character of the neighborhood, uh, presents, uh, multi-families, uh, the line is only two houses away or, you know, house in between, uh, where the zone, uh, CD three ends. Um, so we're actually only asking it to be changed by, by two homes, um, to include it in with the balance of the, um, multifamily homes. Um, the property is also, uh, has done, the owner has also done everything she can to make it affordable housing, uh, understanding that there's an affordability crunch here in Connecticut. Uh, and coincidence with the, uh, governor's, uh, government's, um, passing of HB eight thousand two, uh, which is going to become effective, uh, January first. Um, we have also come to realize that the property is located, uh, will be located within a half mile of the transit station, uh, where it will be considered, uh, part of the transit-oriented, uh, district, uh, which will have a reduction of density requirement and also parking. So understanding that that is coming down the pike, uh, January first. Um, we, uh, we and we believe that this is also keeping in character with, with that as well. Uh, we just might be couple of months or a month, uh, ahead of that. Um, the, uh, rents, uh, that are being charged are well below, uh, market in the area. Uh, I, I, I took a look myself to, to see what things were going for in that area. Her, the highest rent for a two-bedroom, one-bath, um, Ms. Holmes has in that, uh, unit is twenty-five hundred of twenty-five fifty. Um, and you'll see a note that for a two-bedroom, one-bath in South Norwalk, that, uh, is, um, quite generous and she's tried to keep it that way. She's also, um, made sure that the neighborhood is, uh, appreciative of, uh, her efforts to, uh, upgrade the property. Um, I also like to bring to attention, uh, that there are actually two parking spaces behind the home, um, that are used by tenants as well. So it's not all on-street parking. Uh, that has to be taken into consideration. Uh, we do understand that there is a density issue, um, that was brought to our attention, uh, by staff. And we would, um, offer that if, uh, the approval was made contingent upon, uh, approval of a variance for the density, um, that that would be acceptable to us. But I also do believe that after January first, that that will become a moot point because density will be, uh, become a non-issue after, after that or closely after that. So we're coming today to ask to have that zone change, uh, that zone line changed by, again, by two houses. It does keep in within the character of the neighborhood. There are a number of multifamily buildings on Couch Street. Uh, so this would not, uh, be out of, uh, of character.
Are there questions for Attorney Ship? One question I have for you, if, if you don't mind, um, re-explaining it briefly, as I, I'm, I think I might have missed the part where you were describing how, um, the, the new legislation changes the, the density piece. Uh, I'm, I'm not familiar with that component. Do you mind re-explain that briefly?
Absolutely. Uh, there's a Housing Bill, uh, eight thousand two, which has, uh, been passed, um, and just waiting for governor's signature. And it's going to affect housing, uh, throughout the state. Uh, in particular, it's going to also affect, uh, have a greater impact on those, uh, housing units that are within the, uh, transit, uh, oriented district, which are any properties that are within, within a half mile of, uh, a transit. Um, what, and I, I did, of course, measure to find out that, that the property is point four miles, uh, from the South Norwalk train station, so it's well within the, uh, that transit, uh, orientation. Um, it, it's something that, uh, it's gonna, gonna make a lot of changes, uh, here in the state. Um, and I know it'll affect each town as well and around any transportation centers.
Um, a question I think I have for staff is around, um, our ability to approve something like this with, uh, contingencies on, like a change of state law or, uh, getting a, a variance. Is that something that we can, um, we can do through a condition here, given that it's a map change?
Um, I mean, in, in this case, you have pretty broad powers since you're acting in more legislative capacity on whether or not to approve or, or deny. Um, I mean, one of your remedies for zoning violations is not, you, you can withhold approvals until such properties are brought into compliance. Um, the, the issue that exists is that even if you were to grant the zone change, there's no guarantee that the ZBA is going to grant the variance, in which case this doesn't remedy the violation.
See.
I, uh, also have a question for the, uh, staff. Um, uh, Brian, when, uh, did you first notify, uh, the property owner, uh, that they were non-compliant?
Uh, in terms of the notice of violation?
Yes.
Now, I believe it was, uh, the violation notice from John. Uh, ta-da, ta-da, ta-da. So his original notice of violation was sent on December third, twenty twenty-four.
So about a year ago.
I- if I may, if I may.
Please, let, let, let me, let me finish, please. Um, Brian, uh, has, uh, the staff move forward uh, uh, against the violator, um, uh, in terms of setting fines or, uh, other disciplinary actions?
Uh, so I believe that a citation was, um, issued on July sixteenth of twenty twenty-five.
And what is the typical next step?
Uh, so at that point, I believe the next step, and maybe Steve might know better than I do, is that, uh, the applicant was given, uh, time to either remove the unit, bring it into compliance um, before the fine has been issued. I don't know if a fine has been collected at this point in terms of, um, the enforcement process, um, other than it's been accumulating at a hundred and fifty dollars a day since, uh, to my understanding, July sixteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I think.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, no, go, you can go. I can wait. So, or follow up.
Well, um, I don't have my notes in front of me, but my understanding is that when a notice of violation is issued, as was happened in December twenty twenty-five, it gives the property owner a certain length of time to sort of voluntarily come into compliance and tell zoning that their compliance to prevent a citation being issued or something like that. And it's only if after they see that nothing's been done or the property owner hasn't responded, that then they do the citation, but that the notice of violation tells them what's wrong and gives them some sort of timeframe. It, is that, were they given a timeframe to bring the property into compliance from the notice of violation? Or did the timeframe communication only start with the citation?
I'm not positive on the date of that piece of it. I think in this case, to me, the, I would say that they, you know, typically they're, they're given the option of, okay, you can try to bring it into compliance through whatever, um, means are available, or you can correct the violation. I think in this instance, I don't think that the method, uh, presented in terms of potentially bringing in the compliance was good advice because it's, it's a zone change predicated on getting a variance, which I don't think is the best approach, in my opinion. So I think it would have probably been, been better served to just, you know, they have the right to ask the question because I don't think we can deny that, but I think kind of guiding down that path probably isn't, wasn't the best approach.
Do we have a copy of the notice of violation and then citation notice to see what the instructions or their request was and then?
Yes, that was included in the packet, yeah, but I could.
It was. Okay, I'm sorry.
It may help a little bit.
Anna, are you, are you done with the questions that you have? Lou and I, I know you had started, or are you go with your questions for the moment?
Um, no, I, 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 I wanted to point out that in the past, I've objected uh, to, uh, resolving these kinds of issues through zoning changes. Uh, that, uh, uh, the proper process is for, uh, the violator, um, whether it was intentional or not, uh, correct the violation. Um, a zone change just seems to me is a, a separate issue to be considered, uh, if and when the violation has been corrected.
Attorney Ship, if you would like to speak, go ahead.
I would. Thank you. Uh, one, I, I'd like to, to, uh, bring to the panel's attention that insofar as the non-compliance is to the density, this was something that was, uh, just brought to our attention, um, is, I, I, yesterday. So we were not, we, or it might have been two days ago. Um, but we were not aware that, uh, we were in, in violation of the density and that, that would become, uh, problematic. We still decided that we'd like to continue and, and move forward with this. Um, with the idea that perhaps, uh, not perhaps, that we would then file for a request of variance. Um, but this was something if, if I had known, um, a while back or, or discovered or realized, I, I would have addressed it, uh, then. Um, insofar as the, um, citation, that the, uh, notice to my client was not received, um, by her. And once it was finally given to her from one of her tenants, um, because that's where it was mailed, um, we, we reached out to the town and we have been working with them since, uh, to try to, um, uh, come to, uh, a, a way that we can bring the property into compliance. While I understand your concern about, you know, not amending or correcting the violation by this, this is, um, uh, again, something that was not her fault. Um, and, and I know you've said it doesn't matter either way. Um, but I would, I, I would ask for consideration that, uh, you know, she did this in, in all earnestly and has been very cooperative and has done everything as far as move, trying to move this forward as quickly as possible. We will do whatever is necessary, uh, to make sure that we're in compliance with the town. And the town understands that we've really taken that position, but this is our, this is our hope that we can get, move forward this way.
Are there other questions for Attorney Ship or for staff? Yeah.
Yes, so what were you aware of in the months of December and July?
My apologies?
What were, you, you said you were of, uh, the density issues? So, so what you guys aware of between December and?
I'm not sure what you're asking, my.
His question is, what were you aware of between December and July?
When, insofar as, well, it wasn't until we received the notification of the town of non-compliance that it was, it wasn't a density issue, it was that there was, uh, it's, it's in a two-family versus a three-family zone. So that's what we remain aware of.
When did the owner receive the notice?
I believe it was, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was May. I think it were the initial, uh, communications.
And to put a funny point on it, the thing you were not aware of was that changing the zone to CD three would not remedy the density requirement.
That's what we just became aware of.
Understood.
Just became aware.
Tammy, did you have a question?
Yes. Um, I don't want to say I'm a, a little confused by this application, but I'm a little bit confused betw- between seven couch and nine. And where the, the three-unit parcel, the third floor, let's just call it, unit is what is illegal and trying to remedy that by switching the the zone. Um, is there a person living in that third illegal unit currently? And if you could answer that, then maybe I'll ask some more questions.
Uh, there, there is not a person living in the top floor, no. There's no one there.
There is.
We have vacated that, uh, that top floor. There is no one there. We have vacated that uh that top floor.
Oh, nobody's living there?
Nobody's living there.
Okay, and so to remedy. The situation, then the owner. Would have to remove a kitchen, assuming that there's a kitchen up there.
Yeah, and remove, I believe there's some locks and now in the doorway leading up, yes.
Okay, and so that the the owner does not want to do that. The owner would prefer to try to get the a change of zone.
We we were able to just get the tenant out. Uh, so this is a matter where there's somebody who was living there. And now they have uh vacated, we were able to get them to leave. Um, so that's, you know, we 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 also had the issue of, you know, we we couldn't just throw somebody out either. Um, but they have now left voluntarily and um. Again, this is, you know, it we we would prefer to have the zone change. Um, so we could make it a a legal unit.
I appreciate that it must be difficult to get the tenant out. Um, but having illegal apartments is. Um, not something, you know, that the city can allow, so.
We reach.
If you were to withdraw your application and wait and see what the state decides. Would that? Satisfy you rather than making. A a zone change for something that. Is illegal.
Well, it wouldn't be illegal if we have the zone change. So we would prefer to have the zone change. We'd we'd like to be able to offer housing, again, affordable housing to, you know, people down in South Norwalk. Um, I grew up in Norwalk and. And um, you know, I'd love to see how North has changed over my sixty plus years. It's particularly South Norwalk.
Is there a site plan available of the?
Tammy, did you have anything else?
Um. Not right at the moment. Thank you, Chapin.
Okay, no problem. Darius, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, is there a site uh available?
I'm sorry?
Is there a site plan available?
Uh, site plan as far as.
Uh, Darius, you mean?
Go rendering of the unit and um. The design or engineering of.
I, no, I don't have one.
Yeah, and the materials, I think I only saw a a map showing the the properties that would be changed.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian, did you have something you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, just to. To clarify, even with the zone change, that unit is still. Illegal because it doesn't have permits and. Just granting the zone change does. We'd still, staff would be unable to give them a permit because it would not comply with density. And I know H B eight zero zero two is still relatively. You. Um. But it still relies on. The city, meaning you as the planning and zoning commission, to make. Changes to the zoning and density standards. It's not like the 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 state bill doesn't. Override your zoning rights to increase density. You still have to make zone changes to to do that.
Thank you, Brian. Um, I think procedurally, I I agree with Tammy that it would likely be smoother for the applicant to. Um, withdraw and either uh seek that variance if they can. Um, and. Wait for the new state legislation to come through that might support their case, but uh we can't uh require or even compel that, so. Um, you know, happy to continue moving forward here. Are there any other questions or um? Uh, comments before we go to public hearing? Yeah, go ahead, Anna.
Yes, so. I've now gotten through the full packet. I'm sorry I didn't get through it earlier. Um. I see the notice of violation from December. Third of last year, and it has very specific instructions for how to remove. The third unit and come into compliance, and it says if they don't. Correct them within fifteen days. They can be subject to a citation of up to a hundred and fifty dollars a day, so. While I understand that. That the owner. I guess didn't receive it. What I'm wondering, I guess more for Steve. Is why after fifteen? Days? The citation wasn't. Issued if we hadn't. Seen change or gotten contact from the owner and and I I asked that also because I would be more. Open to considering a zone change. If the fine had started at that point. And the owner. You know, paid the fifty three thousand or whatever it would be for a year. Of being and knowing violation. But was saying, look, this is right next to the border, the unit is there. There's a housing crisis. It's had a third unit with however many cars come with that for X number of years. This wouldn't be an increase. To the people living in this area, it just. Legalizes it. I would feel better about something like that. If they had been fined the way they ought to have been from the beginning and were willing to pay that fine.
So the the citation hearing officer is the one who actually levies the fine. Um. I have to look at the notes to see exactly where that. Occurred if that, not where that occurred, but where that happened in the process. So typically, though. Uh, the citation hearing officer allows them to seek other remedies to. Cure the violation before issuing the fine, so it's kind of like, all right, you you can try doing that. If that fails, then you need to come back and we'll, you know. Bring it into compliance, so there's no guarantee regardless that that a fine would be issued.
Right, but I don't think this went to the citation hearing officer until July, and there was. They were supposed to bring this into compliance within fifteen days of. Early December last year, so guess I'm trying to figure out what happens after fifteen days. Whose responsibility is it to? To get this going if they aren't in compliance after fifteen days, and maybe that way we would have figured out that she had never received it.
Yeah. Again, I I don't know the exact specifics on that. Particular case, but typically if they send out a notice. Um, and they they don't get a response, then they'll, you know, the next step is we usually send a second notice. Again, seeing if we get a response, you you know, that could be regular mail and certified mail. And then the next step is typically we use um. Uh, marshal service, so that way they can, you know, they have a better chance of tracking it down, and. That's an acceptable form of a delivery of the citation if it's done through the marshal. Um. I, and I don't know, I apologize, I don't know the exact specifics on this, whether the. I believe the unit was verified to to be an illegal unit, so sometimes it's. We get a complaint about an illegal apartment unless we get inside and can't verify, but in this case, I think that there was um. Verification that was, there wasn't a legal unit. Uh, my guess from what happened would be that uh once contact was made with the property owner. They were advised that um. Okay, you can try to legalize the unit through the process of changing the zone. Um, unfortunately, I think that was bad advice, and I don't think that was a good uh remedy to the situation. Considering the fact that the the variance was also required, and I don't, I I unfortunately don't know the. You know, specifics on the the gap in time from July and or from December until the May timeframe when they were notified.
But again, we didn't know that a variance was required until two days ago.
Yeah, that's that's a separate piece that, I mean, in my opinion. You know, that should have been flagged at the beginning and I and be honest with you, I I if it was me, I would have not advised that the. You you know, you, like I said, you have the ability and the right to seek the zone change. But I don't think I would have advised it based on the fact that a variance is required also. Especially considering that the zoning regulations were just amended and, you know. Zoning lines just redrawn, so at that point, it's not probably the best time to seek um seek variances of that piece.
One question I have for you, uh, attorney ship is about the uh notifications. Um, I I didn't see it in the materials that that we were provided, but um. Were you able to send out notifications uh to neighbors about the the map change?
Uh, yes, and actually, and we sent the proof of. Of the uh them being sent out to uh to Mr. Baker. Uh, or.
Wonderful. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm that. Go ahead, Galen.
But this may be totally irrelevant, but the concern I would have with the third floor apartment that's not. Legal is, is there any fire hazard? You know, does anybody inspect it from a safety protocol view? When it's unpermitted? Would we know if we said, oh, okay? We'll make the zone change that there's no. Safety issue here.
We 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 could tell you that uh if the zone change is made. Then anything that needs to be done to make it into compliance and be inspected, because of course with the zone change, it. Would require the city to come out, the fire marshal would have to come out, uh. The building department would have to come out, we'd have to actually. Put uh put in a permit, is uh pull a permit also to make the correction. Uh, with that would all be required and and we'd have to get a C of O.
Okay.
And Galen, as far as I know, that fire marshal is the one who alerted our office that there was a multifamily here, so. It had, it had been getting inspected by the fire marshal.
Any other questions before? Go ahead, Tammy.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's exactly relevant, but it's trying, I'm trying to understand the situation better. So when um. Mister Ship, when the owner, Ms. Holmes, bought. The property. Were all three units occupied?
Yes.
And Ms. Holmes is not one of those occupants?
She is not.
Okay, um. Okay, um, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions before we? Go to public comment? All right, hearing none. Um, if you would like to participate in uh comment for this application, uh, you may do so in a little bit. Brian will. Share how you can participate. Um, this is your opportunity to provide uh comments and ask questions of the applicant. Um, we will hear everyone at uh first, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond at the end, so it is not a dialogue. Um, you only have one opportunity to speak. We ask you to be concise and polite. And lastly, we ask you to start with your full name and address. Uh, Brian, do you mind sharing how folks can contribute?
Sure, so if you'd like to speak on this application, please use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen and click that once. If you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine. And with that, we'll start with Jim Del Greco.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Jim Del Greco. I'm at forty one Elmwood Avenue in Norwalk. Please do not approve a zoning change for seven and nine Couch Street. The Golden Hill neighborhood has been an anchor for South Norwalk for two hundred plus years. Allowing a zoning change for two properties in Golden Hill is a slippery slope. That greenlights other property owners to make the same request. Especially those absentee landlords that only care about profits and not the well-being of the neighborhood. Additionally, parking on both properties is extremely limited. I email photos to Steve uh for you to review. Please, if you have a minute, uh, take a look at those photos. Property nine has a narrow driveway to a small backyard that can only park two cars. It will be a nightmare to have cars parked in the driveway. They won't be able to get out. Number seven is not much better with three cars already taking up the entire side yard and back parking areas. Often cars are parked in the driveway protruding into the sidewalk. Forcing pedestrians into busy Couch Street. Finally, street parking on Couch Street is at a premium. Couch Street is a busy thoroughfare from Martin Luther King South Norwalk to I ninety five South. Two-way traffic cannot navigate the space in front of seven and nine Couch Street. Especially when the traffic light at Fairfield Avenue is red and cars get backed up onto Couch Street. Adding more congestion to this area is an accident waiting to happen. Um, we've been fighting illegal apartments in South Norwalk, especially Golden Hill for years. Um. Allowing the zoning change will just facilitate. Destroying our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and attention.
Next, we have Jim Clark.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everybody. This is Jim Clark, nine Golden Hill Street. Uh, in Golden Hill and um. First, I want to say Mr. Del Greco makes an excellent argument, I think, for not approving zoning changes for seven nine Couch Street, and I agree with his comments, so. Uh, the Golden Hill Association, um, which I'm the current president. Uh, has recognized uh for years that one of the most. Detrimental issues to our neighborhood is illegal apartments. From which flow a litany of problems. We have issues of traffic, parking, fire, police calls, transient tenants. And more, and that and they erode the stability of our neighborhood, so. Rather than approve their zoning change request, I would strongly urge you to have them bring their current properties into compliance. With existing zoning regulations if they haven't already. And I I just, we shouldn't be giving certain properties and property owners special dispensation to add more units. And make more money. In violation of current zoning regulations. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Um, and if anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool. It's located at the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Diane C C.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I think there's a little delay here.
Okay.
Um, Diane C C, Olmsted Place in East Norwalk. Um, and also East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Um. We don't typically speak to. Applications um. Outside of East Norwalk, um, generally speaking, but. Um, I tuned into this one because I was particularly interested in how this came to be. Um, where where there would be a zone change here, and um, I don't want to repeat everything, but I I think what what Mr. Del Greco. Um, just said, whoops.
I can still hear you.
Did I drop off there?
Nope.
Okay, sorry, little technical difficulty here. Um. And what Jim Clark just said, I totally agree with. I think this is a, I I I feel badly for Ms. Holmes, I want to say that. Um. I'm not sure how you get in a situation where. According to the city records, I think this house sold for. Eight hundred thousand dollars or more, and I think it's unfortunate that. Um, that process didn't include better due diligence to understand what the situation was there. Um, but regardless of that, I think trying to remedy this with with the zone. Um, amendment is a bad idea. I agree, it's a slippery slippery slope. And I'm afraid that it would set a a precedence. Um. I I know the amount of work that went into. Going back and forth over setting all of the neighborhood. Lines with the new zoning. And it was an exhaustive, um, I know Steve Kleppen and Brian Baker can tell you how, what an exhaustive um. Process that was, and there must have been good reason for. Uh, where where that line was cut, but um I have the same concerns that the Golden Hill folks have. Um, about um non-owner occupied. Um, and and the fact that this, you know, has gone on for this long and that this is not the appropriate remedy, so. I too would urge you to um deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last call, if anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool. To the bottom of your screen, you'd click that once, and if you're dabbling on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Seeing nothing further, Mr. Bryce.
Thank you. Um, before I hand it back to Mr. Ship, uh, J J, I saw that you uh were able to join us uh near the beginning of this application. Um, do you feel comfortable um voting on this, or would you like to sit out for this application?
I feel comfortable voting.
Okay, great. Uh, so Anna, I think you were previously seated for this, but when it comes to deliberations, you'll not be seated as I think we have nine regulars tonight.
Oh, um, I'll concede to Anna.
Okay, uh, sure, Anna, you are seated for this application. Um, great, uh, Mr. Ship, uh, this is your opportunity to respond to the public comment. I'm sorry, attorney ship, go ahead.
That is, that's not a problem. Not a problem at all. Um. I I understand the uh concerns. Um. But. We're we're already looking at that the um. Property has been in use. From a number of years, um, as is, and this is. Uh. And and. You know, it's not that we're pro. Illegal units. I I mean, this is something. illegal units. I I mean, this is something that was brought to our attention, and now we are working on to remedy. Um, we uh understand, you know, what it takes for a zone change. Uh, I'm I'm a former Norwalk zoning commissioner myself uh many years ago. And uh so I appreciate, you know, what has to be taken into consideration. Uh, but I also look to um what's keeping in within the character of the um neighborhood and as far as the application goes. And this is not a stretch by by any means. It's it's uh we're we're talking two houses. Um, and where the line is. You know, it's hard to say, you know, if I, you know, if I if I were to ask the commission, you know, if it was number seven, you know, would we be having the same discussion because then we're to be talking about one house? Um, and and I don't think that it, you know, one more house is really making that much of a difference as far as the character of uh the neighborhood goes or or what the purpose is um in in as far as the developmental plan of uh South Norwalk. Um. There is a housing crisis, you know, that's on right now. Uh, affordable housing is not plenty right now. Um, you know, my client uh is is has below, well below market rates for her tenants. Um, and has every intention of keeping it that way. So she's not doing this to try to make the, you know, the millions that I feel like I'm seeing others in uh in the town and all the the developers jumping on to right now to uh make a good fortune. She's, you know, um trying to raise her family and have a bit of investment income, um but not more than that. Uh, insofar as um, and I I guess I'm just gonna leave it to Will's public comment, though, and I'll stop there.
Okay. Does anybody have any uh questions for Attorney Ship or staff? Uh, go ahead, uh Harvey.
Just to clarify, um it it my understanding is that uh House Bill eight thousand two doesn't require like changes, like the the Planning and Zoning Commission can like opt for those changes. Is that staff's understanding as well?
Yeah, any changes or, uh, you know, creating a TOC or any new transit oriented zone is entirely up to you. It's a opt-in as opposed to a mandate.
Thank you.
Anna?
Yeah, I'm um, I have a question for staff. So there are these field cards saying two family, two family, two family. And then all of a sudden, there's a field card that says four family and per zoning third unit is not legal. I understand that that card was printed in July, but do we know when that change was made, that it said uh for a family and per zoning third unit not legal?
Uh, I couldn't, my best guess is that that occurred whenever the um assessor's off, because the assessor's office, they they don't make a determination on legality of units. They'll they'll go through and if they by their metrics, it's a unit, they'll tax them on that unit. So they could say there's six units there and tax them on six units. Doesn't mean that they're that they're legal units. So whenever they made the determination that there were the four units there, someone may have followed up with zoning at that time and then asked the question, is there, what's the status? Is this is illegal two? Is it illegal three, illegal four? And then they were probably told that. I don't know if there's um any notation anywhere that there was a referral from the tax assessor about a a unit there, and I'd have to pull the file. Let's see if we have a record.
So it wasn't something that was added like after this violation was issued in December?
I don't believe.
Part of this.
I don't believe so, but I could follow up with the assessor.
So this card, if if this was there previously, this card could have been pulled and somebody seen that it said per zoning third unit not legal.
Yeah, looking at the, that's the most recent tax card, Anna. Uh. So I mean, again, I wish that tax assessor had a put the date of when uh the assessment was on there, but I mean, just looking at the years that they use, it's going back from, it's from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-two, so it I the the earliest that tax card could have been from, I mean, it can't be from twenty twenty-two because they knew twenty twenty-four, so I'm assuming it's the twenty twenty-four tax card. If that makes sense. Since they have the, since they have that on there.
And um, in the email from Mr. Hay Ducky to the um to Attorney Ship, it I don't know. I I guess I don't have a question. Okay.
Do you have a comment instead you would like to make?
I think I have a comment.
Okay.
I think I have several comments. Um. I feel badly for this owner. Uh, I think as some other people do, uh although if it had said, you know, illegal unit on the field card at the time, I think that's part of due diligence. Um. I do not like the idea of removing um a unit that is under market that's been there for lord knows how long um from the inventory, but I feel strongly that when we discover these violations, we need to respond to them and remove the unit, get the units removed, find the owners, get everything into compliance. And I feel like there's a number of areas here, not just recently, but even going back to, I saw something about two thousand and eight that they put in, they got zoning approval to get a third electric meter, right, or something like that. So like, I feel like there's a lot of places here where I'm not impressed with the activity from various city staff or how our systems work in coordination. Reading the email from Mr. Hay Ducky, it sounds like he is giving um the owner, you know, advice on how best to work the system and not have to pay any fines. Um, and is almost resistant, as I was compelled to send a citation. Um, the violation was in December and it wasn't corrected. So I'm I'm concerned about this on a lot of levels, and I feel bad that the owner um may have to remove it, but I do agree that uh that we shouldn't set the precedent of zone changes to cure violations. Um, and I don't know. Those are, those are my general thoughts. Not thrilled with any of this, and I'm confused about the seven and the nine and all the documents, but.
Uh, Steve, um, for purposes of advising uh Attorney Ship, um if we uh uh deny this, um, can he come back at some point and um uh reapply uh for a zone change? Yes, at at some point down the road, he could. Um. I think with without, well, I think the first step would be removing the unit and bringing it into compliance and then which is, I think, kind of what your initial points were on this is get into compliance first and then you 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 know, potentially come back. I mean, for my vantage point, um, I I think as was discussed and brought up by a few people, we we did take a a pretty exhaustive look at zone boundaries as part of this, especially looking at the the edge boundaries from where you go from one to two, two, two to multi and and so forth. Um, so I don't know if if anything is warranted at this time, you know, with all of us being very cognizant of the need for for more housing and making sure obviously that anything that's built is safe and compliant with all all city codes. Um. We did, you know, increase density in, you know, in upzoning from one family to two family in many areas. Um, so we we have seen an uptick of that kind of development. So there, but there is more ability to for the market to saturate some more of that. So I don't know if we need to look further at this point, but that that would be a call from you. Um, just one quick point uh to raise it. It it's typically, you you can, if you have a two-family, you can request a third meter, that the landlord meter's option, you know, pre- pretty common because that way that if you have like a duplex, for example, the the common areas or whatever is joined there is usually ownership of the whole condominium, for example, and then each unit has it its own separate meter, so that that is pretty common.
Thank you.
Sure.
Harvey, I saw you had your hand up before. Do you have a?
Um, Attorney Ship, do you have uh any other records that you haven't provided around how long uh the current, I guess, the prior owner was paying taxes on this building as a as a three to four unit?
Uh, any other? I I mean, it ba- basically, um.
What I saw in the packet was basically twenty twenty-four. I was curious if there was anything before that, and then stuff.
Oh, it's definitely before that. Um, and I and apologies.
I I see something from the nineties and I see something from twenty twenty-four. Um. But maybe I missed it in the packet.
Just not seeing what the data's on this, I apologize. I know that uh unfortunately, the page that I need is not there.
The closest thing I can see is the real estate listing says that it was noted as a three family since the previous owner, which looks like the previous owner purchased it in twenty twenty-two.
I keep turning my head to read the landscape.
Unfortunately, there's no ability to rotate.
I'm just kind of can't, I don't I don't understand.
I'm looking at one one page from that I that I have a printout from, but I can't tell exactly which date it is, but it's one of the field cards. But they're, you know, they're showing, you know, Julio Garcia as the owner in two thousand, as of two thousand and five, and they're showing it as a three family. Um, I just wish I could find the the date on this. And I'm sure if I keep digging through my records, but uh I know that I that there's a field card that shows that this had been been used as a three family, mixed use, uh, says uh three family. And God, I'm just looking for one data on here that will be helpful here. I'm hoping I can find the top page of this.
Okay, I mean, I looked through the the nineteen nineties field card says two family. And then the as the recent field card says four family. I mean, if we're, the reason I'm asking is because like, I think that the uh, sorry, I'm trying to phrase this carefully, like just, it feels like the the situation in which this has been a four family for a long time and taxes have been paid on it as a fourth family feels qualitatively different than the situation in which that was not the case.
I do know that that's the case. I'm just looking for something that uh supports that, and I'm apologizing for not having that handy.
I I don't know the um nature of the transaction, but I mean, typically, it, you know, a lot of times if there's multifamily, we'll we'll get asked to verify what's legal and what's not legal, and sometimes um banks will ask us for a letter um indicating what's legal and what, no, it's not legal. And then what we usually do is we pull uh all the old tax cards, we pull uh look for old building permits, and if, you know, for an example, something like this, if I saw in nineteen ninety that the tax card says two family in nineteen eighty, it said two family, and all of a sudden in two thousand, it says three, I'm gonna look for a permit between nineteen ninety and two thousand of how it became a three. And if I can't find the permit, then I'm going to have to say, sorry, it's a two. There's gotta be that that chain of documentation that verifies it from, you know, historic to present day. I think we're we're kicking a dead horse here.
You're kicking a dead horse.
Well, I I don't know how much of this procedural history plays into the to the map change. Um. That's where I'm a little concerned on on that component is uh, I also want to be careful that Attorney Ship doesn't introduce new information here that would require us to reopen to uh the the public hearing.
Uh, thanks. The amendment, they still go before ZBA, correct?
Say that one more time.
If we didn't add the amendment, they still go before ZBA. Am I correct?
That's an option to them, that they could go before ZBA in order to get a variance. Uh, that's that's my understanding at least, is they're um able to to go and seek that. Um, are there any other questions or comments before I ask for a motion?
I I'd like to just say I agree with what Anna said in terms of some of the documentation from the city is confusing at best and that well, I guess I just don't think the way they're trying to remedy this situation is the way to go about it. And I think what Darius just said is probably a better idea. It shouldn't come to us. Um. But anyway, thank you.
Yeah. So with that, does anyone want to make a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Oh, second.
Jerry says seconded. Uh, Brian, do you mind pulling up the resolution? Um, while he's pulling it up, I'll I'll echo sentiments I've I've heard tonight that I I do feel for the applicant in in this situation, that this is certainly tough and unfortunate, but I I um agree with what other commissioners have shared that I I think that the um route forward for this is to seek that variance, um, look at the upcoming state uh statute uh that may uh take effect, and uh if so, come back to us with something like this or uh another remedy for us to to reevaluate. But I I think at this time, it's not something that uh that we can improve.
Yes, and we don't have a site plan to illustrate the makeup of the.
Sure. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution?
Now, I just want to confirm that it's sort of backwards from the way it usually is. We say yes if we wanted to not, right?
Correct. We are voting up or down the uh resolution in front of us, which is a motion to deny. So it'd be uh approving or denying the motion to deny.
Okay.
Yes.
Just backwards. So I just wanted to say so that we are all on the same page.
Thank you for that clarification. And uh JJ is sitting out for this one, and Anna is seated. Um, with that, uh, Brian, do you want to call the roll?
Who are? Uh, Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langalis?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Tevaschnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Yes. Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
That is everyone.
All right. So that is unanimous. Thank you for your presentation today and your application.
Where's Nick?
Oh, uh, it looks like.
He dropped off.
Now that he had to drop.
Okay, I missed that.
Congratulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You as well.
All right. Um, our next application is uh uh just for those that are uh tuned in with us here, uh, we will be taking a break at eight o'clock tonight. Uh, so we will see which application we're near as we get to eight o'clock, but we have a number of things on our agenda tonight. And our next one is um twenty twenty-five dash S three. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning text regulation, zoning regulations text amendment to articles one, four, six, eight, and nine regarding permitted siding materials, zoning permit expiration. Um, and Brian is okay if I say and and more.
Right. And and up to you guys, I know we have other applications on the agenda of um you know, other applicants. I don't know if you'd rather take them first, or if you'd like to do this public hearing now. It's it's up to you guys.
Does anyone have a strong feeling about uh taking this uh now or delaying till later? The downside to delaying till later is uh this is our last public hearing tonight, so we'll have to reopen to the public later.
Um, Shave and I were just noting there are thirteen attendees on. In the meeting, on the meeting, whatever you say, um, so uh you might just want to take that into consideration. I don't know that they're all here for that, but.
Yeah, uh, if so, this would be the only one they can participate in, so I I think we should move forward with this application um and hear this tonight uh. In this order, so that way they can sign off afterwards if they if they so desire.
No problem.
It's not the right.
Sorry, it's giving me my like word documents to share, it's not giving me my PDFs to share, which is frustrating um.
While you're pulling that up, uh, since Nick had to drop, uh, Diana, uh, you'll be seated for this application. Yep.
Can you all see that?
Yes.
Um, so um. Before you is a text amendment to various sections of the zoning regulations, they're mostly related to um. They're mostly minor changes and more related to just kind of technical fixes that have come up. Um, as staff has been using the new regulations um. And uh folks have been coming in and applying for for various things and running into some issues. Um, so the the first change, this came up as for as part of that uh forty Meadow Street application that you guys had previously approved was uh the allowance. For uh corrugated inner sheet metal as a permitted siding type in the light industrial zone. So uh we are proposing again to make it from not permitted to permitted. Uh, the second change is regarding expiration dates of zoning permits. Uh, this is keeping in line with state statute, which would sort of uh. It calls uh site plans have about a five year ex- expiration period, so we'd be keeping um. With the Connecticut general statutes on when site plans expire. The third change is related to artist live work uses, um, so these are kind of like loft units where um somebody would do some sort of art. Work on the first floor, have their commercial space there, and then they would live um either above or behind it. Um, we are proposing to make it a little bit easier for folks to to do this, um, but right now it's permitted only in the um. Mixed use and industrial zones and it requires a special permit and there's various limitations tied to it. Um, so we propose to make it. Permitted as of right, um, and then tie um some more lenient limitations to it, uh, which are detailed here. And again, the idea here is that um these are. Uh, would be more naturally occurring affordable housing units, it'd be somebody working in, you know, the first floor space and then living living above. And then similar to um residential portion of a live work building, similar type of use. Um, and making it uh have similar standards as the artist live work, again, very similar uses. Um, making it a little bit easier to to do the uses and taking away some of the limitations that are tied to them. The next change is um the encroachment table, so these are things that are uh allowed to encroach into setbacks. Um, and it would be um putting a cap on how far eaves, gutters or downspouts can um encroach into setbacks. Um, twenty four inches or twenty percent of the setback, whichever is less. Again, twenty percent of the setback, the most. Uh, in in that case, that would probably be the C one S zone, which has like a six foot side yard setback, so essentially uh ends up being similar to the twenty four inches. Uh, five is various changes all related to variances. Um. The the first is to uh reference. Um, the Connecticut general, uh, or excuse me, the City of Norwalk ordinances uh related to. Variances in the zoning board of appeals within the definition of a variance. Um, the second change is related to the removal of uh, it's called the merger clause, which are when two. Um, adjacent uh non-conforming properties are um under common ownership. The zoning regulations uh currently automatically merge those properties together. Um, we are proposing to remove that. Generally, what happens in those cases, if somebody wants to split the lots. Now, they just go to the zoning board of appeals and they um get approved through them to split the lot. To our knowledge, it's very rare that the Z B A denies those applications. Um, so we're proposing just to to not have that as a clause anymore and to. Let those two lots remain as two separate lots. And then the third change is removing the reference to the historic district commission from uh the variance and special permit sections of the regulations. Where those applications would be referred to a historic district commission. Um, to my knowledge, there is no historic district commission in Norwalk, there's a historical commission, but they they are. Separate from the historic district commission, um, so we don't need a reference. If at some point in the future, we have a historic district commission, um, applications within whatever that historic district. Zone would be would would get referred to to that commission. Uh, six is uh adding a definition for frontage buildout, couple uh folks have been confused about what that is. So that's generally when we require a certain amount of building to be within a um minimum or maximum setback, so it's just defining that term. Seven's related to sport fields, um, so the first is to separate it from a principal as a principal and accessory use. Um, so uh when it's a principal use, we would limit that to the civic zone, so it'd be related to um. Schools or parks, um, you know, things that the the city generally would do and making a special permit with additional limitations. Um, and then including it as an accessory use, which would be a special permit. Um, in in all of the zones, uh, again, with the same limitations that are tied to um. It as a principal use and the limitations are all going to be associated with lighting standards, audio, um, and uh things like that. Um, three here is going to limit what it can be accessory to, so these are the uses that we went through. That we would think that a sport field could be accessory to, and again, it's going to be. Required if it is going to be an accessory use to one of these principal uses, then it would require a special permit and have to abide by these additional limitations. Um, and then one of the the changes associated with the sport fields is they should be, or we would recommend that they are. Um, exempted from the the lighting section of the zoning regs, this now this isn't about. How bright the lights can be, but it's the lighting section has um certain pole types and um. Lighthead types, it's generally more associated with like street lighting or private property lighting of like parking lots and what those. Um, light poles are supposed to look like or be designed uh to look like. Um, obviously, sport fields are going to have their own lighting that they'll need, um. That that aren't going to be able to comply with that, so um exempting it from that section. Eight is related to motor vehicle maintenance, repair, repair, fuel sales, service or cleaning. Right now, uh, it, the use. Has a limit of storage of vehicles for um that the storage of vehicles can't be there for more than twenty four hours, but obviously, if you are. Um, repairing a car, uh, you may need to keep it on a lot longer. Um, so we picked sixty days because it lines up with other similar motor repair, uh, motor vehicle repair uses um in the zone. And the regulations, excuse me. Uh, nine is just some um updates to the accessory building or structure definition. Um, the first is limiting how long a breezeway or roof passageway can be between a principal. Um, structure and another structured and consider them to be um attached. Um, or when one becomes part of the principal structure as opposed to being a separate accessory structure. And then the other is just clarification that um swimming pools, hot tubs and spas, as well as. Uh, above ground heating and air conditioning equipment, propane tanks, oil tanks and generators. Are considered to be accessories, uh, buildings or structures, that's how we regulate it now, but we just wanted to um add additional clarification in there. Um, ten is related to driveway widths, um, really at the street. Um, this was per T M P that there are um. In certain zones, there may be uses that are allowed where a twenty four foot max driveway width is not sufficient to um. Allow certain vehicles that would customarily be expected. With that use to make safe turns, um, so if. There is going to be a driveway that's wider than twenty four feet, they would have to get approval by T M P uh first. Um, and kind of gives them some wiggle room on uh how wide their driveway can be uh with their their specific use. And again, this is all kind of saying the same thing, it's just related to different commercial zones. Eleven is about um screening of dumpsters specifically to the C D two zone. Um, so with the city's new um trash pickup policy, there there may be multi-family homes that are. Pre-existing non-conforming in the two-family zone, um, who would have to uh solicit their own private trash pickup. And they may get dumpsters, so we are kind of just saying, well, if you are one of those properties. That's illegal multi-family in a zone that typically doesn't allow for multi-families that you have to screen the dumpsters. Um, this is required for for the existing um commercial and mixed-use zones already, so it's kind of just taking that language and and referencing it in the C D two zone. Twelve is related to max fence heights um in the. Uh, light industrial and heavy industrial zones, um. Giving them a little bit more height at the front of the property, um, this could be for screening and privacy purposes. Again, sort of related to the forty Meadow Street application that you had reviewed a few months ago at this point. Number thirteen, this is uh in in regard to um. Uh, generally, it's absent elements, so it's like when a a new application comes in, uh, they're required to. Um, if they're lacking things like street trees, sidewalks or curbs, um, that they would be required to put them in. Um, there's going to be some developments where that isn't feasible or it's not. Um. You know, there there may not be sidewalks on the whole street and to have one property put them in, especially if it's just a single-family house. Um, it may be. Not really um in the city's future to be putting those sidewalks in anytime soon, so it's exempting single families from having to um. Put in things like sidewalks, uh, street trees or curbs if there's uh. Uh, currently no plan to put those things in by the city. Um, fourteen is changes to um. Frontage types, uh, so there's there's various ones here. But mostly what this is doing is it's allowing more frontage types within more zones, so for example, the first one is a step front, which looks. Uh, as shown in the the image here and it's permitting it in the C D three C zone. Uh, the next shop front, same same thing is that if a building were, right now, the new regulations require the buildings to be located closer to the street. This is saying in which case. Uh, you're allowed to put a shop front on a building in the C D three C zone. Um, terrace light wells, uh, this is permitting them in the C D two because they may be associated with a duplex.
Uh, JJ, you're muted if you're trying to ask a question.
Um, hey, Brian. Um, can can you go back? Two slides when you're talking about sidewalks?
Sure.
Can you expand on that, please?
Sure, so uh, right now, um. If you were going to build a new single-family house on a street. Um, and there is no sidewalks or street trees in front of that house. The regulation pretty much says you have to put in sidewalks and street trees um and and curbs. Um, which could be a good thing, except where. T M P or D P W are not planning on putting sidewalks um on that street. Uh, anytime soon, so you might have a property where we're saying, okay, put sidewalks in and then T M P saying, but we're not going to put sidewalks in there for. Some period of, you know, lo- a long time or there's no plan, like if it's on a cul-de-sac with no sidewalks. So it's exempting just single-family housing houses from having to to do that. So with if a new building were to come in like a a multi-family um. In the C D four, they would have to put sidewalks, the street trees, the curbs, um, so this is just more related to a single-family house in an area where there's no. Real plan to put in new sidewalks.
So an existing house, you're saying without an addition, basically, I mean, but this is a new build, right?
Right, right, so this would be um. I mean, it it does include the the term development, so I mean, we. A strict reading of the rule could be like, well, technically, a new garage going in is development. Um, in which case, we would say, oh, you're putting a new garage in on your single-family property, also put in sidewalks, um, which is a pretty. Big ask of a of a person that's, yeah, or of a development of of just a single-family house.
Didn't we debate this a couple of months ago?
We did, JJ, and I was opposed to it, I mean, opposed to this type of language. Especially in your more densely populated areas.
Uh, real quick, Tammy, was that opposition to it being required of single-family or was that um?
I'm in opposition to not requiring it. I've seen it happen again and again. In densely populated areas within the six taxing district and if. Be given the number of teardowns that happen. Um. It has pre- prevented. Sidewalks where there might be three or four houses in a continuous row. Where there could have been a sidewalk and a safe place for pedestrians and they weren't required to do it. And now the opportunity has gone by and like Brian was saying, you never know, the city. Is doing some new sidewalks, but maybe it's years from now, it could be ten years and that's a missed opportunity.
I thank you for that clarification because I recall that. So.
That's a precedent, right, Tammy? This one next door didn't have to do it and just. I'm also concerned about. Exempting just. Single, like theoretically, I understand if there's no sidewalks on the street and there's no plan. Why do it for just one parcel, but then I don't understand why it would only be single families that are exempted because we could take a single family. Plot, and if somebody wants to build a two-family. Same with same no sidewalks on the rest of the street, who knows when the city is going to get to it, but because they've. Put up a two-family instead of a single-family, they have to put the sidewalk, it doesn't. I don't get the logic of. Of it much at all.
I agree. Brian, are we voting on this in total?
No, so there's a section you want to strike, you are more than more within. It is within your ability to strike certain sections if you don't agree with any.
I was waiting until you got to the end to make my objection because you were on such a roll. Maybe JJ agrees with me.
Yeah, I have another question, Brian, with the sidewalk thing. Is there, I I understand the idea that there's no sidewalks yet and no plans to put them in, but would there ever be a situation where it's like? It's not just that there's no plans to put them in, but like. T M P doesn't think there should be sidewalks here. They wouldn't still be forced to. Put them, right? They would, so even if T M P thinks that um. This particular area actually should not have sidewalks. This would require the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, if this section you think needs additional thought, we could. Yeah, I mean, if this section you think needs additional thought, we could pull it out of this and then we could give it that additional thought and. And kind of try to tailor the language a bit better.
Outside of this at another time.
Yeah, okay.
If tonight wasn't such a heavy agenda, I'd say at the end, but.
Just take out page eighteen, number thirteen.
Okay.
Brian, sorry about that.
No, no, thanks, J J.
Yeah, I'm glad we talked about it while it was up. Go ahead, Brian.
Sure. Um, and then again, similar with like these private frontage types that we were discussing is um. Right now they're being a little specific in the the descriptions and in the definitions of them. Um, in where they need to be located. Um, so we were striking that they. Like this language saying a frontage wherein the facade is aligned very close to the frontage line. Um, a lot of these, you know, this, the the building is going to be required to be at the front of the property anyway. Because of the minimum maximum setbacks. So it's kind of language that doesn't need to be stated. And also. It almost is sounding like if a building is not located at the front of the property, then you couldn't do this step front. Which in which case I I don't see why we would say you shouldn't be able to do that. Um, and then it's tying it to specific um. Uses, so it's saying this type of uh, private frontage type is recommended for these type of uses, but we didn't wanted to. Ex, you know, exclude anything where we would welcome this frontage type um, for uh, other. Uses such as amenity and our lobby space. So again, similar language for various different kinds of private frontage types here. Uh, a little bit different. This is specific to uh, large multifamily building types, which is uh, more than six units. Um, is um, allowing various types of frontage types. So if you want to have a large multifamily, which again is just multifamily. There's no commercial component is still allowing um, these types of uh, frontage types to the building that are generally more associated with commercial buildings. But um, you know, we would say are keeping in with the the character of the the zones that they're permitted in. Um, I believe this is the last one. Um, so uh, this one was newer. I don't remember if this was included when we originally. Went over these with you. So this is a new a new one is for duplexes. Um, right now. Um, duplex duplexes are limited to two and a half stories um, regardless of what zone they're in. So if you're in the C D three zone, you're technically allowed to have a three and a half story structure. Um, if you're doing multifamily, but if you're doing a duplex, you can only have two and a half. Um, so we're recommending just having it be based on. Um, the the maximum number of stories that are allowed in whatever. Zone that that duplex is proposed in. So in the C D three, you could do a three and a half story duplex.
Would that same rule apply uh, if it's in this flood zone?
Uh, right. So the the um, the change would be just that they would have to have that first floor be flood compliant. Um, but they would still be able to do the three and a half on whatever uh, gets that first floor out of the flood zone.
You know where I'm going with this. So then it would be if it's three and a half stories and it's. A whole story off the ground. It's like a four and a half story building.
Yeah, and I I think the the recent changes that we had made to the maximum number of stories and the max height in the flood zone. Hopefully address that issue in terms of pulling down the bulk and how tall those structures end up being. Um, because it al- it takes away that ability for that first floor um, to not be called a story um. Generally, so so it, you know, that first story may still get you out of the flood zone, but it. May still be counted as a story, in which case you're only doing the one and a half on top of that.
I think the distinction should be made that the first, if it's in the flood zone. That the first story is not allowed to be finished space, which then becomes like another first story. And that's what I'm seeing happen a lot. So. I'm not trying to.
No, no, I I I understand what you're saying. Um. Yeah, I I I think it would be s- the same as how we treat the single-family housing now. And again, I think the change to the story, especially have how they're measured in the flood zone, that change was pretty recent. So I don't know if we're seeing any new structures go up under that yet. Um, but again, the intent of that was to pull that height down um, and kind of prevent what ends up looking like those. You know, three and a half, four-story, single-family houses in the flood zone.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any other uh, questions or comments about this before we open it up to the public? All right, hearing none, we'll move to the uh, public comment portion. Um, so for those that uh, would like to participate, uh, Brian will uh, inform you of how to do so in a moment. Uh, this is your opportunity to provide comments and ask questions. Um, uh, staff will respond to them uh, after we've heard from everyone. Uh, you only have one opportunity to speak and we ask that you are concise and polite. Uh, lastly, please start with your full name and address. Brian, do you mind sharing how they can participate?
Sure. So if you'd like to speak on this application, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen and click that once. And if you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine. With that, we have Diane C C.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, good evening, Diane C C. I still live at Olmstead Place. Um. Brian, I have um, questions and comments uh, for you and the commissioners. On four of these items and um, I was gonna work backwards from the last one you just did, if that's okay with you. Are you able to share your screen for these pages? So. I and the commissioner can uh, have it in front of us when I'm speaking through it.
Sure.
So starting with the last one you just did with the um, with the height, with the stories. So I I want to be sure that I'm clear on this and hopefully or maybe all of you guys are and and I'm the only one that's not. But um, I understand the intent of this to make this, you know, conform with with the with the existing. Heights of for whatever is in that zone, but without me doing a lot of research, can you tell me in the C D zones? What is the highest um, number of stories now in in any one of those? Because this is only for C D, correct? Community district?
I think we're going to save responses for the end, just to keep it consistent with how we handle others.
So let me, let me make sure I get all that in. So I think.
Yes.
I want to understand if it's only for for C D um, and if that's the case um. For any of those, what is the the highest number of stories? Because I'm thinking in my head that some of those are maximum of four stories. Or maybe even higher. And I wonder if you're suggesting that duplexes then would be um, at that height, because I think that brings up. The very nature of the duplexes wouldn't uh, you know, support the amount of housing than that that would be. Um, my other question is on, I didn't get the numbers on this, but it's the one right before this. I think you called it the second to last on the frontages. Um, I'm confused on that one that you're on right now. It says loading dock front. Um, and and it's referencing large multifamily buildings, which you said I think is over six units. And um, I'm a little bit concerned because I, because then it it looks like what you're saying is that any of those. Could then have any of those new you, new ones that are in red um, as part of the frontage. And and if that's the case, I would have some concerns about that. Um, depending on, you know, what what zone that's allowed in, but I'm assuming it's so that would be allowed in any zone that has large multifamily. Uh, buildings in it, including if you scroll down just a little bit, I think it says arcade and galleries. Um, so that's just a a concern. Maybe the commissioners can discuss that and maybe they share the same concern or just get some clarity on that. And then the one that I think you called number eight. Um, representing motor vehicle repairs, um, those types of businesses. Um, I understand what you're saying about the twenty-four hours. It that didn't seem reasonable, but it seems like that's a mighty jump to go from. Twenty-four hour max all the way up to to two months. And I wonder where that came from. And then how how are you going to police that? I mean, i- if if cars can be there for sixty days or we're looking at. Businesses that potentially have long-term parking arrangements or people are using it for daily parking. And so the same car can be there for extended periods of time. Um, I'm knocking on my wood head as I say this. I don't have any car issues, but I can't imagine. Somebody's vehicle having to be someplace for more than a week or two. So I have a question on that. And then finally, um. I think it's number three. Under work, live for artist uh, live work. I was confused about, um, first, I think you said that it would be a requirement. For the operator or the artist to actually live in the unit. And then, but then I thought you said that um, there wouldn't be any need to have that unit as workforce housing. Under the workforce housing requirement. So I I wondered for my benefit and the commissioners, if you could clarify. How would you regulate if you're requiring the person to live there? Like, how does that get um, inspected and enforced? And if they're not required to live there, um, given all the the talk these days about affordable housing and the fact some of us think it's. I'll just put in some commentary that a lot of it is just lip service. If if we're serious about having workforce housing. Um, even incremental is a big benefit and I would say that if the person isn't going to live there. Then there's no reason why that couldn't be or shouldn't be enforced as a workforce unit. Those are my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and if anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. Click that once and if you're on a phone, star nine. Seeing none, Mr. Price.
All right, uh, we will close the public participation. Um, Brian, do you want to run through those those four items that were highlighted?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Go in reverse order to some.
Great.
Um, so for duplexes, so this is going to apply to whichever zones that duplexes are allowed in. So C D two zone site is two and a half stories. So the max height of a duplex is going to be two and a half stories. C D three. Uh, max height is three and a half stories. The max height of a duplex is going to be C uh, three and a half stories. Uh, and and so on. So technically, yeah, if a duplex is a la- duplexes, I believe are allowed in the C D four. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, um, which does allow for six and a half story structures. So per this, technically, yes, a six and a half story duplex would be allowed in the C D four. Um, which is the same as, you know, the max height for any other structure. Um, but again, so it's going to be based on whatever the max height is allowed in that specific zone in which the duplex is going to be located. So if your max size is two and a half stories, duplex is two and a half stories. And if the duplex is allowed in its own.
On that one, real quick, um, does it make sense for us to? Maybe adj- um, adjust this to. Uh, per community district height standards um, and not exceeding three and a half stories. Is that a way to balance?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Um, the next one, I can see why this is confusing. I didn't, I should have. Put this on a separate page. So this loading dock front is not applying to the large multifamily building. The only change to the loading dock front is um, the deletion of at the frontage line. Because a- again, you might, the loading dock fronts are generally only permitted in the light industrial and heavy industrial zones. Potentially the marine commercial. Um. So this, the deletion of this language would just allow a building that happens to be at the back of the property to have a loading dock front on it. Um, the these changes here are what's applying to the large multifamily. So this is saying a large multifamily building can have a shopfront, commercial front, arcade or gallery. They cannot have the loading dock front. So. Uh, yeah, sixty days again could be way too much. I just pulled this because this is what we have for the other similar. Motor vehicle repair uses that we have in the regs. Um, they allow sixty days. Um, so I just pulled it to sync with that. And the storage of vehicles, this would not be somebody who could, you know, rent out a parking space and park their their car. It would be s- storage of vehicles related to the motor vehicle. So they're actually vehicles that are being um, repaired. Um, as part of of the use.
On this one, um, does enforcement become more difficult at the sixty days as opposed to two weeks? Like, does the time period play a role there in uh, the ability for the team to enforce?
Um, potentially, I mean, it's a longer record of having to keep of when a car was first there. And then, you know, if it's there on the sixty-first day, I mean, that's quite some time to keep eyes on the same car.
Sure.
They would have to check every day because couldn't somebody say.
You'd almost have to, um, whether it's, you know, inspections or it's, um, you know, the the neighbor taking pictures. And submitting them to the enforcement staff. And then you have to say, okay, here's our first day of documentation that this car is here. Which is probably the hardest part because it's, you know, when was the, when was the car first recognized being there? And then waiting that time period to see if it's if it's still there.
But theoretically, it could have been there on January first. And yes, we see it there in April, but it, I'm I'm going to say it disappeared for two weeks. Or it disappeared for one day in the middle of there and the clock can start over. Unless you have a photo every day.
Yeah, potentially, yeah. So a shorter time period is is fine with us. Um, whatever you think is is reasonable.
Yeah.
I would say it.
Go ahead, Harvey.
Uh, I. Like a scenario in which a car, uh, you know, let's uh, gets in in uh, some sort of accident and then is towed. And then the part that's needed for the repair is on backorder is uh, has happened to me. And that's a situation. Where uh, you either then need to tow the car somewhere else to be nominally compliant with the regs. If it was a short window or you leave the car on the car repair lot. So. Uh, I I personally would, you know, either want to understand from. From some local owners of of car repair places like what the meantime to repair is or or keep it long. Because I want like, I I I take the point that we're trying to let them run their businesses here.
But with your question.
Go ahead.
Um, are you done, Harvey? Okay, so Brian, where where is the storage that you're referring to? It's not on parked on the street, is it?
No, it'd be their off-street area. So like, uh, so say a new motor vehicle maintenance repair place gets permitted. Um, they on their site plan would designate the area in which they are going to be storing the vehicles that they're operating.
So it could be a gas station, an auto repair, a repair place. It's private property.
Correct.
So how is it any different than if I leave my car in my driveway and I don't drive it for sixty days?
Good question.
Okay, so then honestly.
Maybe a distinction is that.
And it doesn't matter if it's private property and the business is in business and they can't get the part for two years. Can, do we really want to regulate that and manage or monitor that?
Fair point.
Sorry to talk over you a moment ago. Uh, I I guess a distinction is that you're likely to have maybe one, three, four cars in your driveway. There might be more at uh, one of these sites, but other than that, I agree with you that there's not much uh, distinction in private property storage.
That's the person's business, just like. An auto dealership has a lot and they have a bunch of cars sitting there. They might rotate them, but they're still just sitting there.
Yep.
Like a gas station or a with a repair.
Thank you. Other comments on uh, this one? All right. And I think the last one was number three.
Uh, okay. Um, so, yeah, how we would, well, one, how we envision this regulation working. Um, is that the person who is actually operating the commercial component of it would be the person living there. Uh, we we could do that through whether that's affidavits. Um, uh, we would apply that. And then with the the workforce housing, we we put in, I mean, it's proposed in here to exempt it from the workforce housing section. Again, the, what I see being an issue is, so say an artist. Starts operating one of these. Um, and the unit is designated as workforce housing. Whether it's at eighty percent or sixty percent and then they submit. And then they submit their income report to us showing they've exceeded that. And then we would technically have to say now you. Not only can you not live here anymore, but you can't operate your business here anymore. Would be problematic, especially for a, I think a use that the city would like to encourage and make a little bit easier. To happen. So kind of tying some strings to it might be. You know, it might be. Might make it more difficult to operate more of these.
Steve.
Yeah, just because as an aside related to that, the city is working and on the kind of the final stages of an arts and cultural district plan. And one of the recommendations in that plan was looking at ways to help preserve affordable artist housing. So I've actually got a draft amendment of to incentivize that where they would be like workforce counted towards workforce units. So. They don't disappear to miss Cece's point that they're, but we're looking at a way to maybe incentivize some and keep them a little more affordable over time.
Yes, Steve, I've. I've helped some people apply to. Live work housing that. The entire building was. Dead restricted affordable for artists live work housing. The issues that. Brian raised of. People earning too much and then losing where they work. I mean, that's just. That's just part of creating designated affordable housing. We're putting these aside for the artists who need this level. When you would go find another place to live and work. At that higher price point and create space for another lower income artist.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a tricky, tricky balancing act with that and. Getting enough artists. Live workspace in general is very tricky, especially that as the. Areas become popular because those type of units are often pretty desirable for other reasons too. So there's lots of things pulling on that.
Steve, could you give us a couple of examples or addresses of these? Artist live workspaces.
We don't have a ton. There are.
I wish that one in South Norwalk.
Yeah, I think it was on Raymond Street. Does that sound right? That was approved several years ago. We had another gentleman looking at another one in South Norwalk. Yeah, yeah. And there was some other ones, I think, contemplated on one of the new developments off Isaac Street two on kind of like the backside.
Okay, thank you.
Something we want to encourage, but it's trying, I think what we need to do is look at incentives to to add them. So that's that's what we're trying to do now.
Another piece to the affordability of these units is the fact that they're able to operate both their their business and residence out of the same unit, right? That it's not two spaces that they would need to. To lease or own in order to to operate both, right? Like, that's a piece of the affordability here.
Yeah, Bridgeport has a couple.
And I'm having trouble hearing you. Do you mind saying that again?
It said Bridgeport has at least two. There's another one. Even and. Entirely affordable. And of course, very hard to get into. But it's a model that is done. So I I would. Agree with. I would agree with Miss DC that I wouldn't necessarily want to. Exempt the workforce requirements out of hand or. Even I would, I would hope that we could try to incentivize. Designing them to go beyond the minimum workforce requirement. If people wanted to. And I think with the new. CMDA and MDMA, whatever it is that we signed on to where there can be some. Financing for that gap that. We know is there with affordable housing. I think there's more and more opportunities for this.
Steve, I know you mentioned that there's an additional tax amendment that you're working towards on the affordability side. Is that incompatible with having the removal or the exemption from workforce housing here?
Um, I don't think it's incompatible. And again, I think if you decided that you didn't want to. Exempt them from the workforce that you wanted to, I think you could vote on that and just, you know, make that modification too. That's the, that's the consensus of the body.
Sure. And my understanding is we we have workforce housing that's spread not only throughout a building but throughout unit types. So in in such a building that would incorporate this type of housing, in order for a a unit to be designated, it would need to be. Close to ten overall artists work live. Spaces or units in the building. Am I understanding that correctly?
Typically, typically, the workforce units are kind of, so if you have like ten, three, three bedroom units and you'd have to have. Representation of a three bedroom unit as an affordable unit. So you've tried the the mix has to match the.
I see.
Market rate.
I see. Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion on the proposed tax amendment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion for this tax amendment?
Well, Chaping, can I make the amendment but take out the item thirteen? On page eighteen for a further discussion at another time? Or do we leave it in and agree to discuss it at another time?
I mean, if you'd like to turn that into a motion to approve with that amendment, I think that makes sense. I'm open to that.
I would make the motion to approve as presented. And also, but but remove item thirteen for discussion at another meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Thank you, JJ.
Can.
Yeah, well, let us.
Can we make other motions?
Uh, I don't think so now that we have one on the floor. And I think.
Reopen line if Anna wanted to add something if I can.
Diana's seated for this one. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry.
Sorry, I'm gonna, can I communicate with like?
Yeah, I think I I got you, Anna. I think I know what you're. At least on that one.
Yeah, you, thank you for your comments earlier. I I think I've also got what you're looking for.
There's a box open already. Yeah, that just.
All right, Brian, do you mind pulling up the? Resolution and we'll.
Yeah, the other items I thought you were looking to modify. There was the, so the artist live work exemption. And there was one other one too. I thought you wanted to tweak.
The length of time for the storage of vehicles.
Yes, yes.
Alright, so let's start with, I guess, the. First live work. And then I'm assuming we'll also do that to the. Residential portion of live work. So it's the same language. So we'll delete. The exemption. Yeah, the exemption from the. Workforce housing. So that's item. Three.
That was a murky, yeah, it was the storage of vehicles.
Like, what is the commission's temperature on that?
Tammy, I think you made the motion to strike this.
No, I'm, it seems. The sixty day minimum. The number to me is sort of irrelevant. Twenty-four hours is. Way too short. Sixty days is random. I I don't have a problem with that. I just. I think once you really ask the question, who's going to enforce it? And, you know, like my example of parking my car in my driveway for sixty days, what are you going to do? So I'm. I guess agnostic about that. I don't care how many days it is.
Oh, okay. I misheard you before.
Yes, no, that's not of a concern to me.
Okay, it was the, it was the next one on.
Oh, it's number thirteen. The sidewalk one.
Oh, yes, right. Sorry, I had not notated that one down. Okay. Do you want to continue on item thirteen since Brian started writing?
Yeah, I think this is just a removal of that, right? The item thirteen.
Yeah, remove it for now and then discuss at another time. I mean, if somebody wants to discuss those other things at another time, that's fine with me too. If I can add that to my amendment.
For number eight, does someone have a proposed number of days or feel strongly about? The storage of vehicles?
You know, I think if we're being arbitrary. Thirty days makes more sense to me than sixty. Gives you time to order a part that may be backordered. Doesn't seem unreasonable.
And as long as it doesn't overflow to the street.
Yep, I agree with that. And I I think that's captured elsewhere in the regulations that the storage vehicles here has to be. Within the within the yard as Brian had described earlier. Or within the site.
The thirty?
Yeah.
I think so. I haven't heard counter proposals, so. And then the last one we were discussing was item fifteen. On the. Height of duplexes. I'd proposed having the. Proposed text with per community district height standards. But not to exceed three and a half stories as the CD four allows up to six and a half. Does anyone? Disagree with that?
Right. And that that includes the rule that Tammy put in about the flood zone, right?
Right, because it's counting stories as it's defined. So that. In the flood zone, that first first floor may not count as a story based on regulations. Are there any other modifications, questions or comments? Oh, he's still typing.
No, you're good.
To this resolution. All right, Tammy, since you made the motion, are you comfortable with these changes?
Yes, thank you.
Of course. JJ, are you also comfortable since you seconded?
Second, yes.
Great. Wonderful. I think we're ready to bring this to a vote. Brian, do you mind calling the roll?
Sure. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Miss Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Given that it is eight oh six, I think we should take a break. Let's plan on coming back in fifteen minutes, coming back at eight ten. Does that work for everyone? Or sorry, eight twenty? I can do math.
Yes.
Great, wonderful. So we will suspend for now and see you at eight twenty. All right, we will resume the planning and zoning commission meeting. Our next application is. Twenty twenty five dash eight zero. Site plan review. And this is Heather McWilliam and Victor Atore. One twenty-nine West Norwalk Road Site Plan Review Application for the Construction of a Detached ADU Report and Recommended Action. Who is representing this applicant tonight?
Victor Atore.
Great, thank you. Do you mind giving us a presentation on your application?
So we are in the process of building a. Single story farmhouse on one twenty-nine West Norwalk Road. And we'd like to also include an ADU for my elderly mother who is. Looking to transition out of her house. So we wanted to propose. Having that as well. It's about five hundred and seventy-six square feet. It keeps it in keeping with the. Aesthetic of the main house. It's basically a miniature version of the main house. And it gives some separation for, I'm sure, as many of you have dealt with elderly parents, it's a. A big transition to go from their house to something else. And. And she wanted to have some separation and also have some independence. So this allows her to do that. With. With a little minimum disruption, hopefully, to her, you know, current situation. So that's basically in a nutshell what we're proposing to do. We're well within our setbacks and coverages and such. So. That's basically it. I don't know if Brian, you wanted to show any elevations. You can show some exterior elevation views, but basically it's a, like I said, a modern farmhouse structure. With a. Standing seam roof and wood chip lap siding. And I guess basically that's it unless there's any questions.
Sure. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Atore?
Just a quick question to Steve or or Brian. My recollection from going over these materials is this is fully conforming. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments on this application? Great. Is there a motion for this application? Galen?
I make a motion to approve.
Great, is there?
Second.
Seconded.
Thank you, Lou. Sorry, Harvey, Lou beat you. Can we pull up the resolution?
I made, I made one, one quick change, which was. I know Mr. Mr. Atore's, I believe he's in the process of getting an address. From DPW as part of this.
Brian, that's been approved.
Okay, is it officially one twenty-nine West Norwalk?
It is.
Okay, alright, great.
While you're typing up for clarity, both Anna and Diana are seated for this and the remaining applications this evening. Are there any modifications or discussion on this resolution? All right. Brian, do you mind calling the roll?
Sure. Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
So.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time, Mr. Tori.
Welcome.
Thanks, Victor.
Our next application is twenty twenty-five dash seven eight CAM Charles Cove condominium association. One nineteen Gregory Boulevard. Construct a shoreline flood and erosion control structure slurry wall in Charles Cove. Report and recommended action. Who is representing one nineteen Gregory Boulevard?
This is broader Coriatra. And I'm representing them.
Good evening. Please. Good evening, please give a presentation on this application.
Sure. Do you want me to share my screen?
If you have materials, feel free.
Let's see if I can let it do this. Can you see that?
It's coming up. Yes, we can see this. Thank you.
Okay, this is the cover sheet. To construction documents that we prepared. For the record, Coriatra Professional Engineer, I live in nineteen old Mill Road, Jaffrey, New Hampshire. And I've been working at Charles Cove on their bulkheads for the past fifteen years. The, this is the last of the significant bulkhead repair work. Charles Cove is located right over here off of Gregory. There's, the school is over in this area. And this is going down to Norwalk Cove Marina. And this is a picture, aerial picture. Of the condominium complex. And what we're doing is repairing, this is the, what we call the east side. We're repairing the bulkheads all along here in phases. Each phase is broken down into thirty foot section. And the work is being done with what's called a slurry wall, which is just a method of construction for a concrete wall. That is behind the bulkhead. It's on the land side of the bulkhead. This is a survey of the property. And this is kind of a closer view of the phasing. Color coded here. Of the. Of the east side. Phase one is red, phase two is blue, phase three is green. And the slurry wall itself. Is, these are sedimentation erosion controls. The slurry wall itself is a, probably this section right here is, this is a cross section of what a slurry wall typically looks like. This is an existing promenade that was constructed, I believe in the eighties. And this is the existing bulkhead. It's a timber bulkhead. What's called a Navy bulkhead. And, and it is, it's held by these whales. Braced by this soldier course of piles here. And then it has a tieback for this upper well. What we're doing is cutting that, we're digging down here in a thirty foot section. Cutting that tieback, welding in what's called a tension plate, dropping in reinforcing steel. We're building a small leveling pad with dials. That acts as a footing. And then we're building this up in concrete. It's tied back to, this, this steel ties is existing. And it's, and this plate here is new. So that's, that in a nutshell is what we're doing. There's. We've gone before camp. And we are currently in front of the D E P for a C O P. And I think this is the last stage with you guys.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mister Atora? Wonderful. Question to staff, this was referred to, do they have any comments on this?
I didn't recall any for this, this application.
Okay.
The memo said deep had no comments.
Ah, great, thank you. Wonderful. Any questions or comments? From this application? All right, is there a motion for this application?
Yeah, I move to approve.
I'll second.
There we go. Can we pull up the resolution? Any modifications or discussion on this resolution? All right, hearing none. Brian, do you mind calling the roll?
Mister Schulman?
Yes.
Mister Jones?
Yes.
Miss Lankowski?
Yes.
Mister Rowena?
Yes.
Miss Tabashnik?
Yes.
Miss Wells?
Yes.
Miss Langgallis?
Yes.
And Mister Bryce?
Yes.
All set.
All right. Thank you, Minister Atora, for your, your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Take care, guys.
Of course, you too. Our next presentate, or our next application is twenty twenty five dash seven four CAM, Joanne Smith, two eighty one East Avenue. Retain a flood and erosion control structure that was constructed without permits. Report and recommended action. Who here is presenting for two eighty one East Avenue?
It's Tessa Tryto, professional engineer with the project.
Thank you. Go ahead and start your presentation on the application.
So I'm gonna try to share. Everybody can't see this?
It is coming online. There we go, we can see it.
Yeah, so. In twenty twenty four, we had approved additions to the house. And it was constructed, so this is an asphalt. And there were certain aspects constructed as not according to the plans. Or not accord. In other words, there were no approval to. To have a riprap slope, which is shown as. Top of the wall and bottom of the wall, so this is not a retaining wall, this is just a riprap. Slope stabilization, as well as in this particular area. There was a, a two foot fill added, approximately two feet of fill. And. This, this area, approximately this line represents a hundred year flood elevation. Or flood zone and elevation of fourteen. So according to the existing conditions, this particular area sort of was always lower. About two feet and it had a retaining wall. And let me see if we could get to the other page. Yeah. So there was this retaining wall. Existing, pre-existing retaining wall, and it was supposed to be a reconstructed retaining wall. So that never happened. Instead, this area was filled, so then. Limit of disturbance, I guess, all this area was supposed to be disturbed as a part of the construction. So no surprises here. And I guess what, what really happened, the contractor did not have access to the back of this house. The slopes are extremely steep. Like fifty percent over thirty three percent, all of them. It's like a cliff. And I, I know myself because we had to do. Soil testing for stormwater management. So when the backhoe come to the, came to the side, we, we basically had to put. It had to dig a hole and put against a retaining wall to actually make some sort of like. Ramp. Out of, so, so my, my educated guess would be that contractors simply had to fill that two foot depression. Against the wall to be able to access the site for construction. That's my basically educated guess when they were building this addition. So that's a reason for the fill, I think. But when it comes to this, I'm gonna go back to, to the other page. When it comes to this riprap. Slope stabilization. That extends throughout entire site, so it probably was a necessity. An unavoidable thing because as, as, you know, as we saw in previous. What approved plan showed, all this area was disturbed. It was approved to be disturbed and the contractor had an access to actually do what we needed to do to build the additions. And thereafter, because the slopes, especially. Below this slope stabilization are so steep. That there were no any other ways to stabilize it. So. We, we had comments from D E P. Basically delegating to this commission. To. And, and I guess we would need to prove several points that. This riprap slope stabilization was necessary and unavoidable. And that there were no any other. Feasible, less damaging alternatives. So, once the slope. Which is more than thirty three percent slope is disturbed. There is actually no any other alternatives. I, I can show how standard details look like for vegetative stabilization. Which would mean a, a lot more excavation. Usually you have to do the entire. Entire stretch of the slope and. Usually that also. You basically cannot stabilize the slope just vegetation. It has to come together with a different. Whether that would be riprap or some other methodologies and. I can try to. To actually go into another slide. And. Let me see. So just to. Touch base on. And I wanted to share also a photo, picture, the way it looked like before. So this is pre-existing conditions. So there was another structure here. And now we have ripraps that slope stabilization. As we can see, the piles. Fallen down. This deck pile and, you know, supporting. Structure is also bulging out, so. I don't know if that, if, if that was due to some sort of like hurricane or whatever, but it can. Can also, there will be from, let's say, soil erosion. And. The house was constructed in nineteen thirty, so it definitely could have been some sort of like. Effects of the soil erosion that would impacted both of these structures and. Now as, so this, this. Structure, which was called shed, was removed. And that, in, in that place, we have this another addition. So. So, so basically, this, this would be the pre-existing, pre nineteen ninety five. January first structures. And. According to the regulations, I guess the house needs to be constructed before nineteen ninety five to even qualify for. For those three different. Points that we have to prove today, so. As an engineer, I can, I can see that, looking at this photograph, of course, I wasn't there to evaluate structural stability. When the construction started, but I could see that, I could definitely see a structural damage to the pre-existing. Building. So, and as such. I would see that. Riprap slope stabilization was a good idea and it is needed and unavoidable. So the. The methods to stabilize slope that is that steep. Basically, like I mentioned before. Riprap or it could be gabions filled with riprap. But usually vegetative measures do not. Do not work and they are not recommended for slopes that are more than four to one. So, which is, that's the case. Also, I would like to. Let me check. So when it comes to the environmental impacts, that, that was another, I guess, part of this. A condition. That to fall within conditions that would be, that would allow to. To have this riprap stabilization was. So mitigation against environmental impacts. So that part again. It was already designed, we had. I guess architect who had a landscape plan. And it is currently not installed, the plantings are not installed, but. They will be installed. So. In, in a way, no, nothing is. So the plantings will be installed right below or in between of this slope stabilization. And this is within the. Basically, within the. Design standards or engineering standards, that's how you're supposed to stabilize the very steep slope. So we have. We have those cross sections and. This part of the site, when it comes to the fill, is just a regular four inch topsoil. And. This existing retaining wall was totally backfilled and it's still there. So there was no need to rebuild it and I guess that, that's you. If any questions. I guess I'll conclude my presentation.
Tessa, do you have any photos of the existing condition because you can't see it from the street? So it's hard for us to envision what it looks like now.
Of existing conditions, right?
Yes, current, current condition.
Current conditions. So this is one of them at the bottom, but I do have some other ones.
Were, were you the, if I may ask, were you the engineer that? Prepared the plans for the submittal?
Yes.
Because I.
That's, that's how it looks like, basically. So this is a slope stabilization. When it comes to all of this area. Basically, it remains the same. The patio was there as we saw in the previous picture. Those, those, you know, piles were obviously replaced because they were bulging out. And the other addition. Is basically was built in, in the area of previous structure.
So where's the, where's the infill?
So the infill is, like I said, here, the way it was with existing conditions, pre-existing conditions. It's, it's that, that wall sort of like. That wall that was there. Was. Sort of wrapping around the structure. Previous structure or like. I, I guess, and it was a depression here, two feet drop. So I have another picture, in fact, let me just, of pre-existing conditions. So that's that wall. And that's that pit. So that does not exist currently because it was sort of backfilled, but this is us trying to do soil testing. So the, the backhoe was on. So the the backhoe was on some, like almost falling down, roll rolling um with his machinery. He he tried to, you know, get some soil from someplace and and make uh this ramp. That to even do the soil testing, it was inaccessible. It it looked really bad. I thought we. You know, I thought we're not gonna make it with the soil testing. So uh the contractor who needed to construct, so addition, I guess, would be um. In this location. So in order to even access. You know, that to build addition to bring materials, they definitely had to fill this entire area. Just for construction purposes.
Why why wasn't that identified during the previously? I mean, if.
Yeah, I I don't know why there was no, I like.
But you did say, I I want to make sure I didn't mishear what you said. You you indicated you were the engineer who prepared the plans, right?
Uh, yes, stormwater management mainly and and the grading, right?
Uh, Steve, I've got a a question for you. Um, is uh, has this put um this house in violation?
Yeah, the this, the the wall itself is a flood and erosion control structure that wasn't. I mean, from basic nuts and bolts of zoning, I don't believe so, but from the cam perspective, yes.
And um, was this pointed out uh to the owners or did they come to planning and zoning?
No, this was, so they had a permit and then there was inspections done and inspections. Indicated that this was constructed beyond what was permitted.
And and am I correct that this house is currently uh on the market for sale?
Yes. So, but in terms of D P and and Kim, uh, it does allow. Riprap stabilization, which is called a structure. In those three, uh basically in the case where the. Where it protects in in the flood zone, obviously. Where it protects uh a house that was built before nineteen ninety-five. So it's not that it is not allowed, but of course there are conditions to meet. So and those conditions are that it was necessary and unavoidable. So we're not talking about the fill. We're just talking right now about that uh. You know, when it comes to the fill, I don't think that uh uh D P was concerned about that. Uh, they were just concerned about this um. Riprap slope stabilization, which um we had uh. Which we had, uh, let me just see if. We can bring it back the other plan. So this riprap um. Slope stabilization, right? And uh so those conditions are to protect the house that was built before nineteen ninety-five. Which that um is along the lines. Uh, maybe this is a new addition, but when it comes to uh all this stretch from here to here, it's definitely uh. You know, definitely needs uh uh to protect the house that was built before nineteen ninety-five. If it's necessary and unavailable uh unavoidable, yes. Because like I said, uh, the slope that's deep um. Uh, and that was disturbed during the construction, definitely need needs to be stabilized by the riprap. Because there is no any other methodologies.
But shouldn't you also know as a professional engineer? That when uh you notice changed conditions, that you have to notify planning and zoning?
So I was not.
This kind of change?
I was not a project manager. I had no idea who was prior, you know, how they build it, what the methods and they used. Um, so I I was not uh involved in that. My my involvement was uh stormwater management and um. Soil erosion controls, you know, for the for the site as um as it was presented.
Including grading, right? That was one of the.
Including grading, yes, yes, yes.
Uh, Harvey, I see you have your hand up for a little while. Uh, would you like to ask a question or comment?
Yeah, uh, I guess one comment is that um, like I hear one assertion. That the riprap is necessary to stabilize the current structure, but then. The assertion was that the reason the riprap is necessary was because the construction disturbed the soil. So my observation is those two comments are intention. Um, and then my question is, um, like, I understand that this is a challenging site, but um, like. Uh, uh, most like, like my layman's interpretation is all of the elements here we're talking about, including the slope. The ness- the necessity to access for construction. Those were all known at the time of the prior coastal site plan review. So why were those not like explicitly accounted for in the twenty twenty-four coastal site plan review?
Yeah, because um, well, um. I- in terms of a riprap so- uh soil stabilization, um. There was no intention at that at that time to do this. Uh, so once. And I don't know, the this was basically contractors' thinking, so. None none of the engineers or architects were involved i- in in this decision or or um. I I guess after he filled this area. And um to take back the fill, to restore the wall, to make that pitch. It sort of did not make sense anymore. Uh, I would, this is my educated guess. And uh to have that uh slope. Basically fifty percent slope right outside the deck. Or like right outside the patio, which is existing patio. Where the piles were previously um. Uh, previously, uh, you know, uh, impacted by soil erosion or whatever that would be. I guess the contractor did not know that he needs to get a permit first before uh placing uh riprap on the slope. And he just needed to stabilize that a little bit.
But the engineer or the manager of the project should have known that.
Uh, I don't know if any, like, usually it's a general contractor, right, who manages the project?
And I see you've had your hand up for a bit. Uh, would you like to comment or question?
Yeah, I guess um. Just wanna double-check my memory. This was an application that came to us and this was a small little house. And I remember the owner, I think the owner was here for that. And said that she wanted to enlarge the house because she was going to retire into it. Um, and use it as her permanent home. And now it's listed for sale. The construction and the zoning plans and approvals. Were not followed. And debris was put into the pond and it. It just seems a little ridiculous. And if it's too hard to do construction. On a slope, then you shouldn't be doing construction on a slope. I don't. None of it makes sense to me.
So.
And that's my comment.
So, I mean, it's not that it is too hard to do construction. Like I said, we went to to do soil testing. And we had to uh, you know, make a ramp. So this is one of the construction methodologies that the contractor decides for themselves how they are gonna do the construction. Uh, but he probably could have taken the soil out, which is two feet of soil. And uh reconstructed the wall. But again, uh, when it comes to this riprap stabilization in front of the house. And in front of this other structure, uh, this would be within the norms that um, you know, within the code. That even D P uh that they should be allowed to protect their residents. There is the, you know, um.
In my view of that, that would apply to the the structure that was there at that point in time, not necessarily the the new additions. Uh, Galen, I see you have your hand up. Uh, would you like to comment or or question?
Well, I was just. You know, if if we refuse, if we deny this application. That means the structure needs to be removed, but I mean, wha- what is the consequence if we deny this?
Brian, I thought I saw you talking, but you were muted. Did you? Not to put you on the spot.
Oh.
Yeah, so so one of the remedies is that the wall would have to be removed. The other is that a coastal site plan would have to be submitted to. You for the modifications ultimately get referred to deep. I would assume they'd make the same same comments that they made uh in relation to this. But um, yeah, ultimately, probably the removal of the of the wall.
And I think the other piece of that.
What happens to the house? I'm sorry, we've got. This house is there and they're trying to shore up. The edge, so the house doesn't slide into the. Water, right?
I think the other piece of it is is verifying that there are not other construction methodologies. That are not inconsistent with deep's regulations that could be performed to protect the house. And then also comply. I think that's the next step.
And building off of that, I I think. Well, so I I think there's two paths forward, right? Um, I I I don't see a path forward for approval here, if I'm honest. Uh, but either for us to seek uh a peer review and ask for uh one of our engineers to. Uh, that are uh that we have as peer reviewers to evaluate this and to help us understand whether or not there are any um viable alternatives. Um, or to move forward with a denial. Like, that's how I'm seeing this, at least. I don't know if that helped answer your question, Galen, of like what.
Yeah, cause I mean, you know, who's to blame is one question. You know, we could talk about who is to blame. Oh, we won't need to, but you know, here we are. And then what happens? Going forward is my question, really. I don't see it.
The the applicant would have to, you know. We can't, I mean, the peer review is definitely a good avenue, but they would have to agree to that first and. Before we could just impose it, you know, I just don't want to say, oh, we're gonna do the peer review and then have them say, oh, yeah, well, we don't want to do the peer review. And then we have a peer reviewer, I have to figure out how to pay for, so keep that.
Sure.
So Steve, what's the um status of the other um non-compliance issues that were mentioned?
I believe, based on my conversations with Amelia, I think. This is the large outstanding one, but I'd have to double-check, but I thought.
I think all of them were corrected from what I have heard, but then again. Um, like in terms of like some sort of debris or whatever else. The only outstanding comment is about is uh for the landscape. Um, plants to be installed, which landscape plants, uh, w- we were just waiting to see what's gonna be happening. Uh, you know, first we were waiting for the right season and then I guess they were waiting to see what would be happening with this uh. Um, slope stabilization. Because you cannot install the plants and then in the same area where the slope stabilization is. So the plants would be installed in between the rocks. As per approved um landscape plan.
It's also, it says here, there was a driveway extension. Not installing the vegetative buffer because you put rocks there instead and then did the debris. What, can you remind me or can somebody remind me what the driveway extension was that wasn't supposed to happen?
I I I think everything was, uh, okay, so. Let me just get to that plan.
I think the driveway is extended across the front of the house.
The this is the driveway, uh, I guess, right? And.
Southern flare-out, I think.
And that's exactly how it was proposed, so there there is the same. Let me see. So um. What it was proposed is the, you know, just a different type of wall that was constructed. Here. So it was keystone wall, but the contractor uh constructed a big builder wall. Sort of also did a slope stabilization.
Steve, is that your understanding of what Amelia was referring to with the driveway extension?
I I'm not positive. I just, I just texted her to see if she was doing a harbor management meeting, so she couldn't be here. But I just texted her to ask that those two questions.
Okay. Yeah, I just had a, I mean, it's um. Uh, a difference of scale, but I just had a situation where I did something on my property. And it turns out that the contractor did something different than what was actually approved by zoning and I missed it. And they caught it at the point of closing out the permit. And. I had to pay a lot of money to to put it, put it where it was supposed to be. Put it back or put it the way you said you would build it, because there was a reason. That they had approved it that way or said it had to be over here and not over there. I don't understand why that wouldn't happen in this case.
Yeah, I can confirm that the the landscaping and the wall are the outstanding items.
The landscaping and the wall. So, but the wall is, uh, oh, you mean the uh, not the wall, but uh riprap stabilization?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, right.
Harvey, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, um. I I think the, you know, the kind of clause, like there is no feasible, less environmentally damaging alternative, like. It's, you know, it's it's hard for me to make that judgment based only on the testimony of. You know, supported by the property owner. Like, I I would definitely second the request for peer review, like.
Uh, if we want to go that route to Steve's point, I think the way we'd want to go about that is to have a continuance where. Um, they have a chance to work with the applicant to see if. Uh, they're open to having a peer reviewer review this. Um, and then we could hear it either at our next meeting or our first meeting in twenty twenty-six uh to see. Um, what what the next steps might be.
Yeah, so this would be like, uh, I just shared a another few examples how those types of slopes could be uh stabilized. So these would be gabions and vegetative, uh, so this would be vegetative stabilization. But it needs to be uh reinforced basically with the gabions or some 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 riprap. It cannot just be you planted some plants and it's going to stabilize because that's not for those types of slopes. So that's one. This is, let's say, uh. Another, uh, so this would be another vegetative. Again, this would be the excavation. Uh, excavation uh or cut required that to install, to compact certain way. That's a slope stabilization. So this is uh the research basically of any available literature, how to do in vegetative way. You know, with plants, as whatever I was talking about. And uh this would be the guidance from. Okay, uh, Connecticut Soil and Erosion Manual. That's uh for the slopes, two to one. That's what they recommend. I did not see any other that you can simply plant something and it's going to stabilize. So this is uh involves uh a um. Geotextile, it involves crushed stone or gravel. Uh, another example would be gabions. Uh, so there are no uh. Any other good examples where you can um, you know, do it any other possible way. For that.
Yeah, I think I'm struggling to see how how these are not. Viable. I I think it's a piece that I'm I'm missing here.
Well, and in any case, Japin, we 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 need advice. From an independent source. Not from the representative. Harvey is absolutely right about that.
I agree.
And. You know, if. So I mean, our choices are, as you've said. To. Put this off while the staff has conversations. With the owner. Or to deny it.
I agree with that assessment. Is there a motion for one of those options?
A motion to deny.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it is seconded.
Excuse me, but I'm going to abstain from this, given my profession.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. I think we still have a quorum amongst members.
What happens? I want someone to tell me what happens. If we deny it. What's the result of our denial?
Well, if you could pull the resolution.
I never got an answer that I could understand.
What happens, I guess.
I'm sorry, we now have a motion on the floor, so it's only the commission members. And staff.
So let's ask Steve, what happens?
What happens?
And I think it's outlined at the bottom of the resolution and the motion to deny. If you want to pull that up, that might. Help as a frame of reference. Sorry to steal your thunder, Steve, if you wanted to.
That's all right.
I thought I scrolled all the way down, just. I can't get enough of this other screen now.
They put everything back. Basically.
I mean, I would certainly be open to considering an amended site plan review later. It's just, I guess, the question of technically whether it's denying or continuing. Like I'm, you know. I don't know, it seems on the boundary to me.
But this was.
I'm sorry, it's only commission members at this time. Thank you.
You know, if you continue it and and. Ask them, I I think what you could do maybe is, and they're almost affect the same thing by continuing it. Or denying it. If you continue it and. You know, we have conversations with them and they are not willing to change it, then you just come back at your next meeting and. Deny it and then they're at that same point. Or if you continue it and they. Agree to do the peer review, then you would have the outside engineer evaluate the. Valuate the project and the proposal and then they would, you know. In keeping with deep concerns and concerns raised by staff, see if there's a more appropriate methodology to remedy the problem. And you can decide if that. It's in line with what you're thinking and then they would have to go if they wanted to go that route, then they would have to go that route.
That makes sense. To me.
It concerns me that. Like. They could just do a number of things that we all know are not. I mean, this this wasn't a small project. There was, there must have been a construction site manager project like. Do a bunch of things that aren't. On the plans. Not follow. The rules. And then, once it's already done. Well, at this point, I guess it makes more sense to. Let it stand or fix it or do it better. Rather than. Put it back. It incentivizes. I feel like it incentivizes. Folks to. Do it and then see what happens rather than follow the rules and the approvals as laid out.
Well, if you do that, Anna, if you 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 say, oh, well, I can just do what I want. You know, we'll do it and then ask forgiveness later. This is pretty expensive way to. Way to. Way to go. I mean, first of all, it's expensive to come before us. Now. You're taking the chance that. I don't even know how you undo it. But maybe. I'm just missing the boat. Of that. So I would be in favor of another. Opinion, you know, getting a peer review. Assuming that they would go forward. With that.
I think you guys are doing a peer review either way, if whether you deny it and they resubmit or you continue it and they. Agree to the peer. I think the peer review probably has to happen either way because I. I don't know if we have anybody on city staff that's going to. Be comfortable enough to comment on that particular. Engineering aspect. It might be somebody with a little more specialized skill set that's. Familiar with this that would would want to look at it.
Yes, but just, I mean, and I don't know with timing, I don't know how far we are already into this statutory. Timeline on this and then extension time. I'd almost rather everybody work with like a fresh clock on it.
That's a good point.
With the denial, is there a period of time before they can reapply to address this?
I mean, I guess you could deny without prejudice, just to be on the same side.
Okay, sure. Anna, is that something since you made the motion, is that something you'd be open to to updating this? I guess we would explicitly say here denial without. Or denied without prejudice.
Yes, I would be open to that.
Okay, Harvey thumbs up, so I assume that's also okay with him. Any other? Comments or? Modifications to this resolution? On the highlighted section there, do we want to explicitly call out? In the last sentence, the shoreline should be restored as nearly as reasonably possible, something around like working with staff to determine that. Reasonability. Just in case they don't go through with the. Peer reviewer, right? This would hold them to what they need to do otherwise.
Yeah, I think wherever you can emphasize speaking with staff. The better.
Thank you, yeah. Great.
Well, it's.
You froze for a moment, Galen. Can you say that again?
I was just. No, I'll. I'm happy with it if if we say it's with that with. Without prejudice, so they they can. Bring it back. But removing the structure is a pretty. Frakonian. Solution.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I would like to see. Better alternative proposed. All right. Brian, do you mind calling the roll? And remember, this is a denial, so voting yes is in favor to the motion to deny. Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallit, sorry, Ms. Langgallit says recuse yourself, Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Tavashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And do I call Mr. Jones?
Nope, yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right.
Thank you for presentation tonight.
Thank you.
We look forward to your next application.
Thanks.
Our next application on the agenda is twenty twenty five dash five nine. Text amendment, RMS Real Estate RevLC zoning regulation text amendment to Article seven sign standards to create a corner sign sign type. And create corner signs within the CD three C and CD four zones report and recommended action. We had continued this from our prior meeting. I think at this point. We even had a motion on the floor at that point to approve it, but we elected to then continue. So at this point, I believe we're continuing our deliberations. Brian, do you mind pulling up the? Resolution?
Sure. So I I went back and listened to the discussion. At your last meeting. And kind of came up with. Compromise, I guess. So the first, it's all related to sort of the lighting. Was. Leading out the words or externally illuminated so that the signs can only be backlit. And then adding in if they are backlit, subject to special permit. So if they were not going to be backlit, then they would be over over the counter approvals. And then putting in a max illumination for how. Bright the backlighting can be to two hundred nits. In my research, that is adequate for nighttime conditions on being able to, you know, read the sign. One thing for you to consider. If all backlit signs should be referred for a special permit. Or if it should only be if they're backlit and adjacent to a residential zone. Kind of up to you if if. If you all, if you only want to see backlit signs, if they're adjacent to residential zones or, you know, all backlit signs being special permit. I guess some of the concerns is that if you're. Proposing to do a backlit corner sign and you are. Adjacent to a condo, then the the notification requirements are could be expensive, but. Just for you guys to to consider.
Brian, do you recall before the zoning rewrite? What the or Steve, what? What were the regulations on an applicant? Putting in a corner sign? Were there any?
Yeah, there were. They're allowed under the old regs and. Trying to see if I put the language in here, what what it used to say. Yeah. So they were. Permitted via site plan review. In our opinion, a site plan review doesn't really make a lot of sense because it either complies or it doesn't at that point. So if you're going to go site plan review route, then just. For the counter. Or if you want to review it and. Review all impacts to adjacent properties and. Condition it based on those, then you would do special permit. So site plan review is kind of, I don't know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to us. But but yeah, so the old regulations did allow corn assigns. I'm trying to see if they were allowed. Yeah, they so they were allowed to be illuminated. It didn't say backlit or. Internally illuminated, so both were allowed. So this is. More restrictive in terms of. The the lighting standards. Potentially the permitting process if special permits required, but the the changes to the size. Are are. It's a little bit. More lenient and how big they can be.
Thank you.
If I recall, Richard had made the original motion, Lou had seconded. Are you guys both okay with these changes or do you have any suggested modifications here?
I'm fine with it.
I just had a question that I. Am I muted?
No, we can hear you.
Yeah, we got you.
I just, I I wondered if the applicant and Brian and or Steve had any conversations about. Utilization of timers on on these lights.
I haven't. I hadn't discussed that with the applicant. So I don't think they offered any. Recommendations or anything that they would want to see in terms of. Timers. My assumption is that they would not want a timer.
You know, as a rabid Seinfeld fan, alls I could think of was that episode of Kenny Rogers Chicken. Lighting up the building across the street, but. Okay, they weren't interested.
Yeah, two two hundred nits in my research. Is is not gonna, you know, light up the sky. I think it's pretty modest.
I think the one thing you guys had discussed last time was that. And and I think, you know, it's budding a residential zone, but I think the fact that. You can have residences not necessarily be exclusive to a residential zone, so this could, any mixed use building can have. Residential units in it, so it's kind of, that's a that's a trickier one to kind of. Parse out.
I see timers as something we could possibly include in conditions with a special permit. An approach based on whatever that that building or. Sign maybe. So I don't think this strictly limits us in our ability to.
Right, yeah, I would. I would think that if it was a special permit in backlit that you could impose a condition. For for timers.
I would say try to keep it as simple as possible. Seriously.
Are there any other?
I agree.
Modifications?
As civil as possible is a really good thing. I mean, do we really want to see site plan reviews for? These corners?
No. Why don't you just eliminate D?
Do it twice. What we can do is we can do a motion on.
Richard and.
So what is the proposal now that the that a permit be issued over the counter?
Yeah, so this would make them all regardless of lit or not let they be over the counter.
With a limitation on two hundred nets for elimination.
I I would, I would prefer to have them. I know it can be a pain in the ass, but. I prefer requirement for the special permit.
It'll be just like.
It gives us, it gives us more. More control. There 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 are a lot. It seems to me there are a lot of considerations regarding lighted signs. And I'd I'd like the commission to have some control over that.
I think Lou, this will turn out to be just like the approval of having to come before us every time they had live music. In a box, you know, instead of doing it over the counter, they come before us and it got to be. You know. I don't think we after a while could even pay attention to it. I think this is an appropriate thing for over the counter. That's my opinion.
We could treat this similar to the live music where initially we do have the the special permit and remove it at a later point based on what we're seeing, right? That was that was what we did for the live music pieces. It came to us and. Until we realized that it wasn't something that needed our input. And we made it over the counter.
Well, I we didn't. Yeah, they came to us for a long time. It came to us before.
Sure.
Or the. Zoning rewrite.
Yep. Yeah, I'm glad that we addressed it.
It's true, so be my guest.
Has Steve and Brian, has the, has your office received? Many multiple complaints about illuminated signs? Anywhere in the city?
The the mall, I think, would have been the only one that we got.
Yeah, that was coming to mind. I'm sure you received a lot of complaints about the mall in general, not just about the lighting.
Yeah, definitely the mall lighting that it impacted. Folks on the up slope side of West Ave when that was first put in and they had, they took steps to. Modify things after a while, and I think it did did improve somewhat. I think the 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 thrust of why this changed in the first place was just kind of. The direction that the zoning regulations were trying to go in terms of kind of. Calming the overall. I think over signage or kind of imposing signage that was allowed and it's kind of prevalent in many areas of the city. So I think that's just kind of one of the recommendations that came out.
You know, it might be hard to compare this to the the mall signs since the mall signs internally illuminated and shining outwards and this is backlit and shining towards the the building. So I think you'll get less of a like a. I don't think you're going to get that likes. impact on, you know, somebody, whether they're driving or living across the street.
Richard and Lou, are you okay with this modification as proposed here with item D? Strictly?
You know, I'm, I'm trying to decide. I, I, I don't know whether I'm going to vote in favor of this or not. So I think, I don't know that it's appropriate that I continue my motion to approve with this amendment. Somebody else can pick it up.
Well, do we want to, do you want to amend the motion, then just see how y'all vote with the amendment or?
Is the amendment, the elimination of the special?
Yeah, yeah, if we struck this from it.
I, I, I'd vote against that.
At least I would get it on the floor for a vote to see how you, the album.
Richard and Lou, are you good with moving?
Well, okay, I'll, I'll leave it in place. It'll go on the floor and it'll go or not go.
Well, what to the other commissioners who haven't opined, I think?
I'm in favor of starting with the special permit.
Okay.
Let's start calling people Harvey.
I'm, I mean, I'm new here, but I personally, like, if you're in a big meeting focusing on the highest priority items is, is generally where I lean. So I'd, I'd be in favor of having it over the counter.
Anna, how are you feeling on this?
I find it hard to care. And yet I can't stop myself from caring because I feel like Lou probably has good reasons. Based on his experience. I'm looking at, I like back, I think I like backlit. Things, I think. My, my guess is that the big sign stuff is like some of the more obnoxious signs on Connecticut Avenue, and this isn't that. I don't know. I don't know. I really don't. No.
It's sounding like it may not carry, if we strike this amendment, if I'm hearing that correctly. I think to share my opinions, I haven't yet, is I'm, I'm also on the fence on this. Like I, I hear very much of what Galen's saying about like, this feels like over the permit, but I, I worry about having this change in what the signs might be. And so, you know, it's worth us having some opportunity to see that. And I hope this does go the way of the live music permit, where eventually we bring it over the counter. But I think I'm leaning towards.
What would we be assessing in a special permit? So, so like, if, if it was a building that required a special permit in and of itself, right? Like a Milpond or a Piper, whatever you want to call it. The backlit, the possibly backlit cornice sign would be part of that special permit. So we're talking about the buildings that don't need a special permit already, who want to have a sign at the top of their building, sort of for wayfinding that's backlit. There's already rules about how high, like how big the letters can be, right? So when we looked at it at special permit, I guess this is a question for Lou. What would we be evaluating or considering? Would it be like the content of the sign, the direction it's facing?
But there
No content.
Not content.
Maybe not content, but maybe who wants to put one up? For, for example, I wouldn't be particularly comfortable if, if one of the firms that sells marijuana in town wanted to have a, a sign like that. I don't think we need to advertise any further. The sale of marijuana. I feel pretty much the same about the, the sale of alcohol. The, the, you know, they're not, they're not things that I want to push any more than they're already pushed by the, the companies that run them. And then assess the impacts. All of the impacts may, it may exclusively be on housing, but it also may not be. You know, is there a restaurant nearby that where it interferes with the, the comfort of the, the people who are in there eating? So I
If it's off at the top.
But again, you know, as, as has been said a couple of times, we can, we can drop this. It, I, I mean, I don't expect that, that we're going to see hundreds of these applications. I think maybe we'll see a handful over the course of a year. And probably within that time, we can determine whether it's something that we really don't want to be bothered with and that can be comfortably handled over the counter.
Would we be allowed to deny, deny something based on content or rather the type of business being advertised? Marijuana or the alcohol?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to it.
So we, we put in this language, I don't know if this addresses the concerns, but it's, the, the sign is identifying the name of the building or corporate tenant within the building. And then the, the other part that might help is that I don't, that one, we're not permitting any more dispensaries in the city. And none of them are four stories or taller, so they wouldn't be able to do one of these signs. I don't know if that helps alleviate those concerns. And I think the, the dispensaries themselves and Steve would probably know, but I think they have their own sign standards for their, their use where they have to be pretty nondescript in terms of their signage. You think, yeah, they
Brian, I like what you said. And if it makes the meeting go along faster, I can withdraw my thing to strike it because maybe we won't get that many applications about it, if that, if that's helpful. To, you know, go with Lou's wisdom.
And it just pertains to the backlit signs, a requirement for the special permit, correct?
Yeah, as proposed, it would only be backlit.
Right.
Right, that cornice signs. They're only backlit, but backlit and cornice?
Correct. Yeah, the illumination itself in the science regs are pretty strict. I think it's like large projecting and theater signs, I think are the only other two that could be illuminated internally.
I am razor thin, razor thin. I tip towards Lou's experience is all I can say. I don't, I'm not necessarily in support, like the reasons you gave Lou, particularly the content wise, I don't feel the same way about the, the, the content, but I just, all everything speed equal, we probably won't get that many of them. And if you feel stronger with it, I'll go in that direction. And I don't always do that. Just want to be clear. But I feel like you know signs.
I'm fine with either outcome and I suggest we just figure out an outcome. We all, you know, we're okay with and we can always adjust it. Like as everybody else has said, I'm fine with either way.
Okay. Yeah, be, yeah, fine. I, I don't think we need to spend any more time on this.
Okay.
Getting late.
So with that, I presume there's no further comments or modifications. Brian, do you mind calling the role? This is a, a motion to approve that was brought previously.
Sure, as, as modified by staff. And then let's start with Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
I couldn't say, if you said Langgallis, yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bashnik? Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
All right. Thank you. We will move to our final application for the evening and that is 2025 dash four nine SP Enrico R. Costatini Esquire, 284 New Canaan Avenue, request to modify special permit 12 dash 16 to expand the area of the previously approved contractor's yard and change the storm water management report and recommended action. Similarly, we were in deliberations last time. I believe there was a motion to approve. I'm not remembering who made that motion. Before we get to that though, Harvey, as we, as mentioned last time, you cannot participate in this component. And I believe everyone who is here has been to all of the meetings thus far and can participate tonight. So except for JJ, as she indicated earlier, so. Great. Steve, do you mind bringing up the draft resolution that you had circulated? Since our
Yeah, Brian, do you mind?
Or Brian, yeah.
So I can kind of just set a quick kind of framework and recap, I guess, for everyone's benefit. There, there kind of are a few issues still outstanding. And I think, I think it was Mr. Bashnik that raised a good point about the applicability of the noise ordinance. So we did, you know, kind of get, get, get settled on like, well, is the noise ordinance emergency exemption applicable to the site? Or is it only applicable to the site of the emergency? And we did confirm with corporation counsel, no, it's, it is at the site of the emergency. So that, that's where there are two additional findings that were added to the resolution to address that. Assuming you're still of that mindset, then that kind of leaves some open questions related to the volume of storage and the, you know, where that storage can be. And then also yeah, and, and then the, the soil screener too. So it's just keeping in mind, you know, it's, it's not a rock crusher, which is obviously a very a very loud piece of machinery and where that screener can be located. And, you know, when that's done, there were conditions to address the hours of operation of the screener. So obviously that can't be done at night. And that's really just like a, a daytime activity that's conducted. So that, that's kind of like where I think things are still unsettled on your end and you just have to kind of, you know, unfortunately make some difficult decisions on, on which direction you want to go.
I am glad that Corporation Council agreed with our interpretation of the noise ordinance. Was happy to see that in this memo. Do you mind scrolling through this to some of the new conditions? I, I know we spoke at length about a, a number of these conditions. Yes. So this was one of the modifications to the boundary of the yard.
Yeah. So the red text is, is new and everything else that was considered has been adopted and, well, I shouldn't say adopted, but included. So that's, that's new text.
Great.
Steve, I'm sorry, I can't find this draft resolution in the meeting materials. There's so many for this item.
I think this was emailed separately.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not there. That's why I can't find it.
Deadline.
Okay, thank you.
And I highlighted 21 just because those kind of conditions are, I'm not ever, I'm usually not thrilled with those because it's kind of, after a while, those tend to not get submitted. So I don't know, I, like, I think remembering back to the application you guys did for River Road for Gray Barnes, kind of left it where it could be, if requested, you could ask for all that documentation. But if you prefer to have that remain, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. Just saying it's sometimes not the, the easiest one to enforce.
Well, I, I don't know that it's useful, you know, if they just send something quarterly saying like, we're in compliance with everything below. Copy and paste every three months. That's not super helpful, but a quarterly affidavit that includes like the number of calls that have come into that phone number, what the complaints were and what they've done in response. The, the, a report of, you know, if they've got these things to measure impulse whatevers.
Events.
How often are these impulse events? Thank you.
Yep.
Happening has the, the, the thing where they back up too fast or they, they do some sort of maneuver to create noise in their trunk or something. Is that still happening? How often does it happen? Things like that might be helpful.
And to your point, Steve, I, I, I think it might be helpful, especially in the first year and maybe we change his language to say for the first year, providing those quarterly and then make them available, you know, as requested or something like that. So that way we don't have to pursue them for a notice of violation on year six because they forgot to submit their report. Does that help ease the, the enforcement component of that?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, you could do like, you know, 24 months or whatever that.
Sure, first two years, yeah.
Yeah, and won't the neighbors help you with that? I mean, if they're upset, they'll be calling.
I think it's good to put it in there. I mean, I, I do think it's good to put it in quarterly and that they, like Anna suggested, they need to be specific. How many violations of tailgate slamming, how many violations of the beeping too loud, the reverse beeping, stuff like that. And then maybe to staff, if you get complaints from the residents, keep can, is it possible to ask you to do one more thing? But, you know, keep a log, there must be their file and how many calls come in or emails come in reporting violations of, of the requested compliance.
If they put them in through click in requests, that shouldn't be hard, right?
Yeah, we, we can definitely track complaints now. Complaints and violation aren't always the same thing. And, and in instances of, is it a violation of the noise ordinance that the police department is the one that's making that determination, you know, because they're the ones go getting the calls, getting, going out and doing the measurements. So that, that's, that makes it complicated just to, you know, we're asking somebody else to monitor this as well.
Well, is that always the case? I mean, don't you guys get the email complaints?
Right. So we, yeah, like I'm saying, we, we, we could get notified that there was noise at 3:00 AM, but is that, was it a violation or was it not a violation? Unless there's a documented record of it occurring in what time and what noise and it was over the limits that, that's the actual violation.
Gotcha.
What hap, when the police do go out someplace and do the thing and find that there was a noise violation? Does that get logged somewhere? Is there a central place that the police do keep a record or the city keeps a record?
Yeah, the, the police logs are, yeah, they're much more detailed. We, there could be, there would be like a report generated from that.
And I think similarly, we've seen police reports where they were called out and not necessarily able to make a hard determination about a noise ordinance violation, but still had a record of the call out and their observations of the site at that time, not necessarily for this location, but for others that we've seen.
So if somebody like emailed the police and say, hey, can you send me any reports on this property in the last three months? Is that something that they would be able to be responsive to? Want to take a ton of work?
Yeah, they've been like, I've done that for other things and they aren't very helpful on that. And I think it's all, you know, free of information as well. So if any, anybody made the request, you could get it.
Anna, can you go over the list of things?
Okay, here's my list. Things I want. Quarterly. A log of calls that came into the dedicated call line that they were required to establish in this. You know, what the complaint was and what, if anything, was done in response, right? Because we're doing this because presumably there will still be noise. And we want to know, and I think the property owner wants to know if the noise mitigation things they're putting in place are actually working, especially if they do the half filling the, the bins. Is that enough? Do we need to fill the bit, whatever, whatever? So those, if they are measuring for the impulse sounds. Measuring for the impulse sounds. How often are the impulse sounds happening? Has that decreased? Does it decrease over time? Does the? The tailgate slamming, has that decreased or does it decrease over time as they implement this new disciplinary? Policy in their operations manual? What else was it? Just basically like, it's not an affidavit that I promised we're doing it, right? But these things that we said you would do, what's happened with that? What's the result?
All right, and I'm trying to think, think of like language that we could use for the tailgates slamming. Is that fall under the impulse events or is that? Separate of them? And then, and then the maneuvers, I'm trying to think of how they would document that that happened. One, how they would and two, would they?
Yeah, we think. Oh, go ahead, Anna.
No. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I would think the impulse events are the way to track that because that's the, the outcome of the action, right? It's the, it's the outcome of the tailgate slamming or the, the backup alarm being loud, right? Uh, I'm, I'm not sure how they could track it more specifically than that, right? And, and that's the piece that.
Logging.
Is causing, logging what?
It's number, number 25 on page. And on, uh, there's no page numbers here, let that be a lesson. Um, it says that cameras be installed with audio event capabilities and a microphone capable of detecting and logging impulse noise events. To monitor gate slamming and locations approved by staff. So they're agreeing to do this. I would like to know the results of that. It may well be that in the first quarter, there's 20. And in the second quarter, there's 10 and it, or it may be that, that they bring it down to 20. And then everybody stops paying attention and it goes up to 40 and 60 again, or whatever it is. It would be helpful to know, and that also. Um, speaks to a way to know whether, you know, if complaints are coming in, are they? You can. You know, have the neighbor complaints, then you can also have what the logs show and you can evaluate all of those things. In tandem, in terms of whether these mitigation strategies are working.
Can I suggest a, a modification of what's written into, I think incorporate what you just described? And that's instead of the number of impulse noise events recorded, uh, the log of import impulse noise events recorded? That, that'll also give us the number. While also giving. The detail, and I think the use of the word logging and condition number 21 makes it pretty clear that that's the same log we're referencing. Any other modifications to item 22?
In. 24 down below. The, I think it's pretty clear, at least it seems pretty clear that. The onsite volume, at least when we were out there doing the site walks, is probably. Double the volume at lea- you know, it's probably close. Double the volume of what was initially approved in terms of, um, storage capabilities. For, in, within the bins, so the question, that kind of puts it back. Volume wise to where the initial approval was. The proposal kind of with the new, uh, sound wall and moving it to the other side of the property. I think close to, you know, like I said, doubles it, so maybe. Do you do 50%, something like that? I put in, I put it back, but I think you could, if you wanted to be flexible to give them a little wiggle room. You could also start them off smaller and then see how, I think you suggested in the past, see how they. Now behave going forward and let them come back and modify the request to increase the volume over time. So I think you have some flexibility in terms of where you want to go in terms of the volume.
You're suggesting something like 150% Steve? Initially?
Yeah, just making sure we word that very carefully so we don't, uh. Yeah, so.
So it would be 150% of the volume indicated on the initial site plan?
Yes, I, I, I think that, that's, that makes sense.
Where the initial site plan is the approval from 2017 or the site plan submitted in 2016, right?
Chapin makes a good point. Uh, clearly the initial site plan.
Yeah.
Can we just say what that approved volume is?
I don't know if we have the number handy. I, I was looking to see if the, in the initial. If in the conditions it references that, I might be able to find that exact site plan that. Because that would answer that, that would.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with staff inserting the, the square footage after the fact if, if others are. Um, though I also think that what Brian just added makes it pretty clear that we're not talking about the 2025, uh, site plan. When we reference the initial.
I think what you said was a good idea, Steve. Like we reward them if they behave.
So does that mean, uh, setting it to 150% initially or setting it to 100% and then allowing more increase in the future?
The latter.
Okay.
The only thing that I, I don't know if we can figure this out, but. In their proposal, they have the cement blocks designated. And it seemed to me, if I remember correctly, they were sort of all in a row. And there really isn't space for them to go further. So I'm not sure which, um. If that's the maximum right now. Or if it's, uh, if they could increase it. Further, I, I think I'd need to look at the survey. Again, maybe I can pull that up.
I'd be more, again, more comfortable giving them something upfront. Uh, not holding back on everything, so 150, 125, I mean. Whatever, whatever we can all agree on.
I'm sorry, Lou, you kind of cut out, so you said you would like to give them. Additional storage space now.
Yeah, above and beyond what was initially improved, but if people aren't comfortable with 150. Maybe go to 125%.
Well, I don't want to, uh, reward them for their, their prior behavior. I, I agree that having some, uh, increase in the material stored, uh, will likely make them more successful. And not only implementing this plan, but also. In adding more sound attenuation through material being in bins. And so as, uh, as much as I'd like to keep it exactly where, uh, it was in 2016. Uh, I think some increase. Provides, provides benefits to the overall, uh, outcome of, uh, of this modification to the site plan.
Yeah, I would agree. And to a certain extent, they can't necessarily help. How much? Material they bring back from the site. Every site's different. It might be a huge mess, small mess. So for us to overly regulate that might be.
Yeah. But it is, uh, on them to make sure they've got capacity.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, Brian, the application was 12-16, so if you want to, that, I think that references it.
Oh, yes, I read that out a moment ago. I could have given it to you again, sorry. Great.
Okay.
So then our next item to discuss is the sifter. So one of our facts is identifying that this is a, a new element to the site. Uh, it's one that they had identified in the hearing, if I recall correctly, as a critical to their, to their operations. Um, we had talked about a few different things to, to do with the sifter. And I think, Steve, if I'm reading this correctly, the conditions outline a few different paths that, that we could take here. Do you mind walking us through those?
Yeah, so that, again, and I, I think I mentioned this at the outset, that it's, you know, that. There is a difference between a rock crusher and the soil screener in terms of the, you know, impacts and noise. And they do different things, um, not saying one's not loud and the other one's quiet. But. There, there was, uh, you know, and the neighbors have raised that as a concern. The applicant has indicated that. Piece of machinery is pretty vital to their operations. I, the, I think there is a condition that addresses the hours. That, you know, was agreed upon with the applicant that, you know, we'll, we'll do that during normal business operations. There won't be any use of that machinery related to kind of any of the emergency work. Um, so we put in there two options, you can say, sorry, you can't do this. Or you can come back maybe at a later date and request to include that. Or just relocating it to a position where we'll. The, the sound from that will, will be less impactful. So I think that's what we're trying to get at and giving you guys a couple different ways to look at it.
And condition of 28 is the one that limits the time of use for the sifter.
Well, if we're setting ours, then we need, we need to. Uh, eliminate 30 and keep 29, although we have to change the language on 29.
Okay, how so?
Well, it says into the largest bin or located or as close. Take that second or out.
Thank you, great catch.
Yeah, and remove 30.
Yeah, and eliminate 30.
Okay. Then the, oh, go ahead, Steve.
I was, I'd, no, I was gonna make a comment on 31, but.
Okay, I was gonna call out 30 as one that, uh, I would like to see that they have that. Barrier installed to not expand the overall site usage. And similarly, if they show that they're able to be good neighbors, you know, they can come back to us and we can revisit that, that barrier. Uh, go ahead on 31, yeah.
31, I just think we have to be a little care- I, I, I forgot to, I was gonna raise that as a question. That was something that was kind of offered up at one point in time, but I don't want to give. Like a carte blanche condition where it's just so open ended that it ties their hand, so I, I don't. You know, something that should be reasonable would make sense, but then not. Saying they've got a landscape, everybody's backyard. So I, I'm not sure I'm thrilled with 29, 31, the more I read it, so just kind of throwing that out.
Maybe we could tweak it, I'd propose that, and because after. Walking and driving around the neighborhood and where they cut down so much. And it is going to take time for those things to grow. Maybe we put a timeframe within the next year or, you know, something along those lines. Because some of the properties just see right through to their equipment. And with the wetlands is you can't put quick growing evergreens because they're not necessarily native plantings. But they're plantings nonetheless, if somebody wanted it in their yard and their yard isn't a wetland. And just give them a timeframe or, you know, a certain number or something like that. I'm not trying to take the applicant, you know, make him spend all his profits re-landscaping the yard. But, you know, they cut down a lot of stuff, so I think they need to. Put it back for those neighbors that are completely exposed.
Maybe, and, and I'm not looking for more work, but maybe have us kind of, we could maybe be. Somehow staff could be the arbiter of what's reasonable and not reasonable. So it's like somebody, like I said, I, I, I'm less concerned about the timing as to say somebody, all of a sudden, they want a complete re-landscape of their backyard. Use this as an opportunity to do it, so, yeah, maybe if we could add something in consult, in con- consult, consultation with staff on this, that.
Yeah, within reason, is that a term that you can use? You know, up to 10. Evergreens or I, I don't know, but something that, yeah, within reason would seem reasonable.
Yeah, they provide vegetation, vegetative screening within reason. Come if desired on their properties, yeah, and I think it's fine. That's a little better.
And you can put a timeframe on it if you want, within the next year or within the year of this application, something like that.
There, yeah, maybe at the very beginning, Brian, within, uh. Yeah, it's fine too.
And, uh, Tammy, do you view that as like a expiration of this? Uh, like need for neighbors to request or that the property owner like must reach out to these neighbors in the next year?
I think the neighbor, the owner should be on the neighbor to reach out to them, you know? I mean, if he wants to reach out, if the applicant wants to reach out, fine, but. He doesn't have to plant within the next 12 months, but that he has to be, you know, they need to make their needs known.
And 32 is just something that kind of popped up after the fact, like, hey, what if, um. Is there another place on the property that? Could provide some relief, um, in terms of noise for staging of materials and equipment for emergencies? So maybe that, like, if they have to do something that, that it's even further away from the neighbors and less impactful on the neighbors. And may, maybe that's something that they could work with staff on coming up with and we could see if it makes sense or not.
Yeah, I, I like this one as it, I think, gives us an opportunity where if we've. Since there's a, a, a number of modifications to the site plans in these conditions, this gives the ability for them to just work with staff on rectifying those. Those potential issues and finding a better spot for that ma- material storage to, to benefit the neighbors without necessarily needing to go through a whole new. Uh, application process. And I also trust, uh, Stephen Bryant to bring it back to us if it's significant enough where they would like our input on it.
I think that's it for the changes.
Wonderful. Are there any other modifications or discussion for this resolution? Brian, if you're talking, you're muted.
Yeah, just talking to my daughter.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking to us. So I believe I, I looked up in the minutes, it looks like, uh, Darius had originally moved this and Galen had seconded. Uh, Darius isn't with us, but, uh, uh, he's signed off. Uh, but, uh, Galen, uh, are you good with these modifications?
This is otherwise with us. Yes, I am.
Great, okay. Um, do we need to have Galen like remake the motions and Starius isn't here? Okay.
Yeah.
Galen, do you mind making the motion?
No, not at all. I'll make a motion to, uh, accept.
Great, and approve this application?
Of the application as provided in the revised. Resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Lou. I think we can do a roll call vote. And everyone's seated for this, except Harvey.
Sure, um, Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Ms. Tabacnik? I'm sorry, was that a yes you kind of? Yes, 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 okay. Uh, Ms. Langgalls?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Okay, I believe I got everybody.
I believe so. Great, so that is our. Last, uh, application for the evening. Um, next up for discussion is, uh, approval of the 2026 meeting calendar. Uh, Brian or Steve, do you have that, uh, handy?
Yeah, let me just pull that up real quick.
Thank you.
You need me to vote on this?
Uh, if you would like, you're more than welcome to.
I've been listening to the whole conversation.
Oh, good, I'm glad, I'm glad you were able to join tonight.
Pretty much like the old.
Yeah, I think we're pretty good on, pretty good on holidays. I think the only one was Passover, I think was the only one that, um, moved anything in April and I think everything else was. Pretty much.
Okay, and what are we gonna do? Do we, do you want a motion?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll move that we accept this we, meeting calendar.
Wonderful, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tammy. I think we can do this one with a show of hands, all those in favor? All right, nice and unanimous, great. We'll move to our next item, which is, uh, acceptance of the minutes. We have both October 8th and November 5th. Uh, let's start with the October 8th. Uh, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, Tammy. Is there a second? Thank you, Anna. Uh, we'll do that show of hands, all those in favor for the October 8th. All right, all those abstentions? All right, and all those opposed? Oh, okay, great, so it looks like it, uh, carried. Um, and then we also have the November 5th minutes, uh, is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Lou, second. Thank you, Lou. Second. Is there a second? Oh, Sammy, uh, all those in favor?
Almost, Tammy.
All right. Thank you, JJ. So uh, all but uh, one. Um, uh, comments of the director. Steve, do you have uh, any comments for this evening?
Not at this late hour, no, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any comments of commissioners?
Uh, I have uh, one comment. Um, it sounds to me as if the uh, adjudicators, I I know that's probably not the proper term. Uh, but the people who, when, when um, we we file a complaint, um, hear the case. Um, it it sounds to me as if they're um, awfully lenient. And I'm wondering if we might meet with them to just let them know what our feelings are about using the tools that are in the toolbox. And that uh, not being so lenient discourages bad behavior. Um, and being too lenient encourages bad behavior, at least in my view. Uh, I'd I'd like to try and get that message to them. I don't know who they are.
You're talking about the hearing officers or the zoning inspectors?
No, no, not the staff. Uh, the the hearing officers. Uh, I think most of them are attorney, they may all be attorneys.
Yeah, I might be uh, missing some context here and happy to Steve respond to that as well. Um, I'd also be interested to hear from their perspective, like what they're, what they're seeing as well, right? And what what feeds into like the decisions that they're making, but also what they're seeing, like maybe in the regulations that you maybe need adjustment or or otherwise, because there might be some things that they're seeing that um, we can, we can adjust as well. But uh, Steve, did you want to reply to any of that?
Yeah, I think you had mentioned before, um, and I don't know if it's a better methodology is to, if you wanted to send them a letter and then say with your concerns or, I mean, if, because you can't meet with them as a commission unless it's a meeting and it's like an agenda item. So you'd have to do that. And I don't know if that's the best forum for it, but or maybe it is. So I think that those are kind of the only questions I would have about that. And I do think um, I I think staff needs to, I think in this last application was a case in point on that. And then the other one, um, the Couch Street one was another one that trying to, and I have another one, I have a third one that's coming up where I had um, somebody that had it, had the a special permit that violated a condition of it. Where was a condition where you guys could go back and consider deleting that condition, but then they just ignored coming back and requesting that. So now I'm having to do the enforcement process and and push them to do something. So I think it's it's staff being more um, forceful and more clear and not providing that, you know, a compliance comes first. So I think we can do a better job of that. And then the other piece is where do we chat with the hearing officers in what format and what's the most appropriate way to convey that?
Yeah.
Oh, uh.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, go to Diana. Diana, do you want to say something? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Anna.
Although I I certainly would be, I think, interested in a meeting with the hearing officers. I feel like it would be super important to have the staff and that, you know, the hearing officers, they're independent, they make their own decisions, but it's really the staff that, um, because I watch, I watch these hearings in other cities and see how they're handled in other places and it's the judge gets to make their own decision, but it's often very much influenced by how the staff presents the case, the message they're sending, what they ask for, what they say, you know, judge, we are hoping that you'll grant this, that or the other because of this, that or the other. Um, and so I don't know if there's any issues with that meeting with the hearing officers in terms of influencing their independence or anything like that, but I also think it's, it's really on the staff to be clear about the role of enforcement, the purpose of enforcement, how we communicate these things. I understand, I mean, I've spoken to some of them before, but it I've heard it said in hearings, you know, our goal is not to collect money from people, it's to get the properties into compliance. And it's like, that's that's sort of a false equivalence. Of course, the goal isn't to collect money from people, but there's a reason that there's a fine structure in place and it is to deter this stuff and ensure that things are brought into compliance as quickly as possible. So like, both can be true. At any rate, I would be open to whatever, but I just wanted to bring that up in terms of the role of the staff and the role of the hearing officer.
One other thing I'd like to add is, uh, yeah, I'm glad we're having this this conversation here, and I I think it's the the right tone. I want us to just make sure that in the future, as we're uh, seeing violations and such, that we're not disparaging the uh, the hearing officers and or staff or such during those uh, uh, things, because it can be quite heated and we have uh, um, incomplete information sometimes on like prior uh, violations and such. So uh, yes, glad for the conversation tonight. And I think it's the right structure of conversation to have. Curious to hear uh, what we should do next and and continuing that conversation, but I want to encourage us to to be careful not to disparage our own uh, and and those uh, in those applications. Great. Any other uh, comments of commissioners?
Oh, just, I'm sorry, just to go back to that. Anna, where is it you watch these hearings?
Oh, my God. You can find them on YouTube and it is fascinating. Um, yeah, just Google citation hearing, zoning citations, zoning citations, zoning hearings in other cities. Um, and also the Norwalk ones and.
But you can, you can put in the browser, City of Norwalk.
Oh, well, for the Norwalk ones, they're on our YouTube channel, but.
On YouTube, City of Norwalk zoning citation hearings?
Oh, yeah, they're all there. City of Norwalk has its own YouTube channel with all the public meetings and.
Oh, that I know. I've seen that, but I've never seen the citation things.
Oh, yeah, they're there. They're great. And to Chapin's point, our our staff do an excellent job in a ton of different respects and these, all of these properties are more complicated than we see. Um, and it's great to watch them and you can just learn so much. Um, but also you can people around and find them from other cities.
Thanks.
Well, our next meeting is uh, December third. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Anna. Is there a second? All those in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.